Good evening. I'm Carolyn Rye, Chair of the School Board of Virginia Beach, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this 22nd day of February 2022. Pursuant to the school board's summer reopening plan adopted August 10th of this year and the school board vote on August 24th regarding health protocols for school board meetings, physical distancing will be used in chambers as a health mitigation strategy. Members of the public, as always, will be able to observe the school board meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. We welcome those present with us this evening here in chambers and our viewing and listening public as well. Madam Clerk, would you please indicate the attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in school board chambers is Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Okay, thank you. Would all present now please join me in a moment of silence? And please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, recognitions? Madam Clerk, do we have recognitions this evening?
There are no awards this evening.
All right, so we proceed to adoption of the agenda. And as a reminder, we are adding Item 18, Continuation of Workshop. Any other modifications? All right, hearing none. Motion to approve. Mrs. Riggs, a second. Mrs. Franklin, all in favor, show a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote.
Thank you. And now that brings us to the monthly superintendent report, and I turn it over to Dr. Spence.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. Here are a few items of interest for you and our families to know this evening. I'll begin with just a reminder for our school calendar that Monday, March 14th will be a staff day. We will not have school for students that day. Second, every day our teachers and staff members, as you know and have seen tonight, are committed to serving and supporting our students. Therefore, during the month of February, we're encouraging you to show the love and recognize a teacher or staff member you appreciate. We're asking our community to share why someone they work with is great or why their child's teacher goes above and beyond or that our school's food service, custodial, transportation teams, nurses, and other staff members are the best. And to show the love, simply visit vbschools.com, click the "Let's Talk" button on the right-hand side, and choose the topic "Show the Love." Also this month, make sure you join us online, February 24th, for the next webinar in our Family Connection series. In this session, participants will hear from local business leaders about job opportunities and how to be best prepared to enter the workforce after graduating from high school. This session will be most relevant for families of students who are in grades nine through 12, and you can register in advance for this webinar by visiting vbschools.com. Now, I know it's been a bit since we recognized a staff member as a compass keeper. However, we have a very special compass keeper video for you this evening. I want to take a moment to highlight Ms. Maya Chaka, who currently serves as the Director of Middle School Programs for the Achievable Dreams Academy at Lynn Haven Middle School. However, back in 2021, while working as a health and physical education teacher with Renaissance Academy, her hard work made history, and she had the entire world buzzing with the announcement from the NFL that she was to be their first black female referee. Maya seems to do it all. During the week, she's a leader in her school for the students of Virginia Beach, and on the weekends, she's a trailblazer for all young women worldwide. And undoubtedly, those who know her have learned that nothing's off the table when you work hard, push yourself, and follow your passion. It's even more fitting that she's now at the Achievable Dream Academy at Lynn Haven Middle School because she truly understands the hard work and dedication to make your dreams come true.
All right, lay it up here, come on. I chose to become a physical educator mostly because I wanted to go into education, and I couldn't see myself teaching any other subject. I've had a passion for athletics ever since I was a child, and I just didn't think that my personality, my pace of life, wouldn't fit into a normal classroom. So I couldn't see myself being, you know, a math teacher or English teacher. I had to be something that was active and that taught kids how to be active and taught kids how to be social. Oh, the room don't like you. Come on. I chose the career path of football officiating through my coworker, Sean McMahon. At the time, he was a high school official in our area, and he was in charge of recruiting new officials. And he was just adamant about me starting football officiating because there weren't any women at the time doing it. There were very few. And he just took me under his wing, you know, not only as a teacher, but took me under his wing as a fellow official. And he just pushed me, you know, just to learn everything about the game because I knew absolutely nothing about it other than what I see on TV. And so that was always a challenge to me with trying to master something that I knew I would face some adversity for doing it, you know, because I am a woman. I obviously never played, you know, as an organized sport. So it was a challenge for me, you know, to gain that respect from my male peers.
She knows the game. She's great at officiating. She's been doing it for quite some time now at a high level. And so I think she represents where we want to go in society. It's that, you know, we want equality throughout all of our industries, and Maya is going to do that, being the first female African-American referee in the National Football League, and that's someone who's from here in Virginia Beach, someone who is teaching our youth everything that we feel is important: integrity, perseverance, determination.
Ms. Chaka, year after year, has gone above and beyond as an educator. She not only models for our young people what it is to be a strong, educated, well-spoken, powerful woman, but she gets involved in their lives.
Teaching students to build resilience through adversity is an underrated skill in life that isn't necessarily taught all the time. And I think it's important that students right now, they learn this skill because once you hit the real world, whether it's at work or next level for education or if you choose to take on a career in athletics, you're always going to be faced with something or somebody that is going to be standing in your way of your goal. I never dreamt that this moment would come true. There was a time where I thought I was just going to be stuck being a college official. You know, it took me seven years to reach this point. I never gave up on my dream. I continued to work like it would always happen. It just shows you it's not cliche that her work pays off. You know, as long as you keep focusing on the process and not focusing on the results, the results will come. I never see a challenge. I dislike. I don't back down from it. And I think that kind of, it keeps me going. I never want anything to come easy for me.
My thing for her is that you're just a referee now. It's not male or female. Yes, you broke the barrier. You broke the barrier being the first black female in the NFL, but you're just a referee. We have females in the NBA, and they're referees. And we all have to be looked at that way. It's very important when you're given a platform that you take that platform, and it may be about officiating. Use that to help the community, and I believe she feels the same way.
I think when you also, when you see little girls throughout our nation and throughout the world, they can say, hey, I can do that. I can aspire to be an NFL referee. They might not enjoy playing the game, but they make sure, you know, they can rest the game. They can be a part of the game.
I consider myself a role model for students because I'm someone who is close to their demographic. And I've experienced a lot of things in life that students would like to experience themselves. I'm officiating in the National Football League. These students turn on the TV and they see these athletes. And for me, just to be able to share my experiences with my students, I think that gives me a little more credibility with them. Them being able to see the way that I work every day and them being able to understand that because I reached this goal or I reached a level of notoriety, it doesn't change the type of person that I am. And I think that's real important for them to see that, you know, I'm just, I'm still the same person. I'm just like them. And so I think that's more important than me actually reaching a goal or reaching, you know, a specific level of fame, is them being able to see I'm still me.
So we just want to thank her for representing Virginia Beach City Public Schools so well and showcasing for our students that anything's possible with hard work and dedication. Also, earlier this month, we recognized our amazing school counselors and school board clerks, and I'd like to take a moment just to highlight them here as well. Of course, the goal of National School Counseling Week is to honor the tremendous impact our school counselors have in helping students achieve school success and plan for their future. The job of our school counselor is often one of many hats: counselor, teacher, cheerleader, and opportunity coordinator. But one goal is always the same: support our students. So for all of this and more, I want to extend my gratitude to our school counselors. Also this month, we celebrated School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. These individuals, as you all well know, work tirelessly to serve our school board members, administrators, school staff, students, and our community. And this year, maybe more than ever, I think it's important to thank these staff members who have remained attentive and ready to step into action as needed. So let me just also say thank you to our school board clerk and deputy school board clerk for their continued dedication and service. So if you haven't had an opportunity to thank these many individuals, a reminder that it's not too late. When you see them, say thank you, or you just send a card or share a shout-out on social media acknowledging their hard work and dedication every day using the hashtag #WeAreVB schools. And finally, for my last item this evening, I also want to take a moment to recognize the dedication and hard work of our school board. You know, as we shared at our last meeting, February is School Board Appreciation Month. I think the job of a school board member can be a tough one. You all may know what I'm talking about. As a school division, we've had some unprecedented conversation over these last years, and you all always make difficult decisions affecting our students and staff. And I know that you do that from a place of love and that the passion that you display comes from wanting what's best for our school community. Safe to say that our division would not be as strong without the continued guidance and support offered by this board. And for that, board members, I'd like to say thank you. Each year, the division works to honor our board in a creative way, and this year's no different. But don't take my word for it. Let's hear from some of our students. Well, we may have a technical difficulty with that video, but we'll make sure we get that cleaned up. I hope you could tell even by just looking in their eyes what they were saying to you, which is that they appreciate your hard work and they're thankful for you. So thank you all for your continued work and support. And Madam Chairwoman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. All right, we have a series of minutes to approve next, beginning with February 1, the special school board meeting. Any modification to these minutes? Mrs. Manning.
Yes, I don't have it in front of me, but I have a screenshot of the section that needed to be fixed. Item 5, Item 5, the last sentence, Ms. Hughes, the reason for abstention, it needs to say "without public input," not "with." Inappropriate to vote on a resolution "with" is what it says.
Okay, thank you. Any other modifications? All right, hearing none. Motion to approve. Mrs. Hughes, and a second. Mrs. Holtz, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote.
Thank you. Now we have the February 8th, 2022, regular school board meeting. Any modifications to these minutes? Mrs. Hughes.
Well, I probably slipped on my chance here, but earlier when you asked about amending the agenda, I raised my hand. I wasn't acknowledged, then I went ahead and voted. But February 8th and February 15th minutes were not sent to us until 11:00 last night. Can we defer them to the next meeting so we have an opportunity to read them before we vote on them?
So you're, emotion, emotion, are you making a motion to defer?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Mrs. Manning? So is there any question before we vote on this? Or anybody else want to share if they didn't have an opportunity to look? Excuse me?
Is she asking to reconsider her vote?
No, to defer the minutes to allow time to view them.
I know, but we've already voted on approval of the agenda.
That's fine.
Okay.
Right, and we have other things later on. We'll read, add, and delete things as things come up. But they weren't emailed until 11:00 last night. I do feel like part of our due diligence is being able to read everything, and that doesn't happen if they come that late. They don't normally come that late, but I would like an opportunity to be able to read them before I vote on them.
I'm just saying this is a procedural issue. Ms. Lynetti, would you step to the mic, please? Because the agenda has, the adoption of the agenda has already taken place. So I'm saying now is not the time to go back and rearrange the agenda unless we...
It's an appropriate motion. The motion is to approve, and they're making a subsidiary motion to defer this based on information. So it is an appropriate motion on the floor.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Everybody understand we're voting to defer approval until the next meeting. All in favor, show a raised hand.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote. To defer the minutes, to defer the minutes of the February 8th and February 15th to the next meeting.
All right, so February 15th, school board meeting.
The same thing. I actually mentioned both of them in the same.
Okay, though I didn't make it clear that we voted on both, so I apologize for that. So just for the record, we'll have a separate vote, a second, the same second, Mrs. Manning. All right, all in favor of deferring approval of the February 15th minutes? Show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote.
Okay, that brings us to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Excuse me, the public hearing on the school operating budget for fiscal year 2223 and the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2223 through fiscal year 202728. And Madam Chair, would you please introduce the first speaker?
Thank you. Our first speaker will be Kathleen Slindy.
Welcome.
Good evening. Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, school board members, Dr. Spence. My name is Kathleen Slindy. I'm president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. My comments this evening are about the budget. The fact is, this budget cannot give your employees a raise that addresses how far below the average salary for teachers in the U.S. we currently are: $6,486 below the average. In fact, a recent study found that educators earn 10.4% less than the state's average salary compared with all other occupations in Virginia. And we rank 50th compared to the average salary of primary and secondary school teachers to the average salary for all jobs in each state and Washington, D.C. Naturally, we can expect applicants for school vacancies will go where the earning potential may be greater. These are our asks. First, though the budget cannot realistically include a 10% raise this year, we ask for a 10% raise to be the goal for next year. Second, this year's proposed decrease for employee contribution to health benefits program be significant so that we will have the desired, it will have the desired effect of helping to retain and attract employers. Third, we ask that the incentives offered to the new hires be contracted and divided so that a portion of each will be given at the beginning and the rest will be given at the completion of the contract, much like the military does with incentives. Fourth, that the division look at reconstructing the step scale so that there's a 1.5% increase instead of a .5 increase for each step of experience so that employee compensation advances will move quickly, more quickly, and more adequately reflect the career ladder for similarly educated professionals. That said, I'd like to address another budget, and this is a budget that is the time budget. The amount of work outside of contract hours required to meet the needs of students is not sustainable. You've heard that before, and you responded with early release schedules for planning in the second quarter. However, it proved unsustainable, and so again, our employees are missing that extra planning time. Please look at employee expectations. Have conversations about this need for more planning that are organic and not prescribed. Ask the people who are doing the work where and how time could be carved out so employees have appropriate planning time to plan, teach, assess, and reflect. Planning and working outside of contract hours cannot continue to escalate as more is added to the curriculum and the list of teacher expectations. The parameters of this change have to change so that employees have time to devote to their families and other interests beyond schoolwork life. How could we do this?
30 seconds.
Examine what is working and what is not, what is necessary and what is not. Let me just skip here. Certain specialists, the special education and English as a second language teachers absolutely need more time to accomplish their record-keeping and parent communications. The SEAN adjusts this for ESL, so please adjust it for special education. In sum, we need both more money and more time. The task is monumental and very important. The VBA and our membership, along with everyone who believes in our work, is ready to help. Thank you.
And that is time. Our next speaker for the public hearing is Jeff Cobb.
Welcome, sir.
Chairwoman Rye, members of the school board, Dr. Spence, and administrative staff. My name is Jeff Cobb, and I am a retired teacher with 38 years in Virginia Beach as well as a member of the Virginia Beach Education Association. And I bring you greetings on this Wild Deuces Day. Tonight, I speak to you on the superintendent's estimate of needs as it relates to teacher retention. I have recently received notice from Virginia Beach, both directly and indirectly, that the division is looking for a few good old war horses to work as substitute employees during a time of need driven only partly by COVID. Those who answer the call would receive, I believe, in the neighborhood of $115 to $125 a day. I must respectfully decline for many of the reasons that you've already heard over these previous weeks and months. Groundhog Day may have passed, but as I review the 202223 superintendent estimate, I see many of these problems being played out on a loop. For example, I see that the proposed raise for many instructional staff eventually totals out to 5%. While this is better than the last several years of my career during which a succession of flat contracts left no monetary incentive to continue, more work remains at the top of the scale and in certain critical areas to keep our teachers on staff. This might help reduce the need to drag the streets for more substitutes. It would definitely aid in the continuity of instruction. The SEAN makes vague references to money being spent to improve ventilation in classrooms. No amount of political posturing can fog over the fact that being in a relatively small space for hours at a time with 30 children is not the same as visiting the grocery store. We should be grateful that so many parents and students have supported the schools, their staff, and most importantly, the health of all to cooperate with the guidelines. However, we need more expenditures to improve ventilation and accelerated use of the federal monies most contributed in taxes. Yes, I recognize that we have more specialty staff hired to assist kids with specific needs. Sadly, though, I see language pertaining to potential cuts in classroom staff to save money. This is a self-defeating prophecy. As more teachers leave through attrition and/or frustration, VB CPS should do even more to strategize and expand both to support those who remain and show the promise of support to those we recruit. As you've heard from many others, kids and staff kept me going after stagnant compensation and rising unproductive demands on my...
And that is time.
Thank you very much.
Feel free to follow up with anything on said.
Madam Chair, we'll move on to our public comments speakers. Our first speaker is Amber Thompson. We'll move on to the next speaker, Kathleen Brown.
And welcome. Good evening. I'm Kathleen Brown. I first want to discuss the budget. I'm combining for your, I'm sure you'll appreciate that. For the public watching, the taxpayer funding for schools is $1,959,466. I echo many concerns brought up in public comments at recent meetings. I did have trouble locating the budget. I finally found it. And when I did, it was not as transparent as I would like to see. Given this budget is over a billion taxpayer dollars, I would really love to see a little bit more breakdown before you pass it because afterwards, it's going to be too late for any of the public to give any feedback for you guys to consider in your votes. I want to discuss the teacher pay situation. But first, I do want to indicate I am not advocating for collective bargaining. I believe teachers deserve better pay than you're giving them. After talking to many teachers, I have realized that teachers with almost 20 years' worth of experience in our system in a master's degree are only making about $6,000 more than a teacher with half as much experience in a bachelor's degree. I see a really, really big problem with that. And a lot of the teachers due to that pay gap, it's just not something that they're okay with. I really, unfortunately, I don't see you guys working towards fixing this problem, and this budget does not address it either. So I'd like to see you guys work towards trimming back some of the fat and determine what the needs are versus the wants and reallocate so you can pay the teachers what they deserve based upon their service and dedication to Virginia Beach City Public Schools system. There's about 45 administrative staff positions, and they make up about 5.2% of our budget. I think you could start your reallocation there. My last comment on the topic of budgets is actually a question I hope you can answer, and that's whether or not the retirement funding is fully funded. I want to make sure these teachers are getting what they deserve later on down the line, and I know that, at least on the city side, they're not fully funded, so I want to know if it's fully funded here. I want to shift gears to talk about masks. Because of Senate Bill 739, masks and whether or not the kids are wearing them, it is state law.
30 seconds.
I think you guys know that you're bending the state law when it comes to the buses. Biden's mandate does not include school buses. It's specifically listed, actually, as excluded. So you guys know you're bending the law on that one, and that needs to be fixed. And I would also like to see teachers have the option to make their own healthcare decisions about masks. Thank you.
We'll move on to our online speaker, Sarah Gerloff. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I am going to give a summary of some of the decorum I have witnessed here. Let's begin with Dottie Holtz's decorum. It is well-known that the good people of Virginia Beach are collecting signatures to recall six school board members. Dottie Holtz took to her social media to bully local restaurants that had agreed to host a recall signing event. Her behavior infringes on our First Amendment right to petition the government as she cried out to boycott these businesses. These businesses have been hit hard by the unlawful COVID policies, but Dottie did not mind attacking them while they were down. These businesses pay taxes that pay the salaries of our teachers. These businesses pay taxes that pay the salaries of our teachers. I guess Dottie does not understand the saying, "Don't bite the hand that feeds." She also does not understand the school board's no-bully policy. As I pointed out during my last speech, Carolyn Rye has infringed upon our First Amendment right to free speech by cutting off certain speakers that speak truth. She also treats speakers unequally. For example, on one occasion, Ms. Rye allowed an acquaintance of Beverly Anderson to freely speak about another individual's attire and referenced that her clothing must have come from Walmart and that she should drape herself in an American flag and go cry in the corner. I'm really not sure what this information had to do with our schools, but Ms. Rye did not call this speaker out for being off-topic or for using incendiary language. So much for the equality BB Schools, School Board is striving for. Several inappropriate books were pulled from our schools, only to be put in after Dr. Spence had them reviewed. Spence made a comment a few months ago regarding these books to the effect of this.
What one might find offensive, another may not.
Well, in my opinion, anyone who does not find these books offensive, any books like these, such as these, offensive containing pornography and pedophilia, needs a mental evaluation. I recently received a letter from Dr. Spence's attorney that appears to be an attempt to intimidate me and infringe upon my right to free and truthful speech. Spence, did you know that according to U.S. Code 241, it is unlawful for you and your attorney to conspire to intimidate me in the free exercise of my First Amendment right? Also, please tell your attorney, Mr. Schwartz, that I appreciated the substantial gem of information he has provided me regarding your unapproved
Thirty seconds.
Using a reference from the movie Spaceballs, tell Mr. Schwartz that my Schwartz is bigger than his. So there you have it, folks, a brief summary of some of the behavior being exhibited by these so-called adults here that are supposed to be setting an example for our children. I can certainly say they are setting a fine example of not, how not to behave. Their behavior is appalling.
Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clark. That brings us to the information portion of the meeting, and we begin with interim financial statements.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Nelnik, school board members, Dr. Spence. As of January 31st, the overall revenue trend remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. As mentioned last month in the presentation, our current projected state revenue, based on our updated projection on the March 31st ADM and the governor's proposed amendments, reflect a deficit of approximately $5 million. We are still waiting on the final approved governor's budget. For this reason, these are estimates and will be finalized after General Assembly action. Federal revenues are showing an acceptable trend at this point in the fiscal year. Other sources of revenue for the month are acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. The next graph shows that sales tax receipts are at a favorable level. Year-to-date through January, we are approximately $5.6 million higher than the same time last year. February sales tax receipts are also coming at about $1.9 billion, million dollars higher than February last year. The last graph shows that the expenditures and encumbrages trend continues to be acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. This concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, we've seen that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Page. This brings us to the operating budget and capital improvement program information session.
Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Nelnik, school board members and Dr. Spence. For this second budget workshop, we wanted to do a brief presentation to reacquaint you with the highlights of the outgoing governors introduced by annual budget, updates to the actions in the General Assembly, the compensation funding included in the superintendent's estimate of needs, and an overview of federal pandemic relief funding. This slide just shows you the highlights of what we are going to cover. Former Governor Northam's introduced by annual budget, he included the 5% raise for funded SOQ positions, expanded the early reading initiative to fourth and fifth grades, which requires the division to provide an additional local match. There were funds to hold divisions harmless for rebenchmarking data and hold harmless related to reduced sales tax revenue from the elimination of state sales tax on groceries. He proposed to increase the staffing ratio for English language learners from 20 per 1,000 students to 22 per 1,000 students. He included in school construction grant funding and provided additional at-risk funding, which also requires an additional local match. So these were many of the main components that we built the budget around, realizing that General Assembly actions could change these initial proposals. Crossover for the General Assembly was Tuesday, February 15th. On Sunday, February 20th, the House Appropriations and the Senate Finance and Appropriations Committees released their budget packages. Today, amendments to budget bills were to be available, and the chambers is scheduled to approve their budget plans during Thursday's floor session. A budget committee of conference composed of House and Senate negotiators is to be in place by midnight tomorrow. And as you can see from this slide, the other upcoming dates listed for the remainder of the General Assembly session. The state's budgets, the General Assembly money committees approved on Sunday, make a significant investment in K through 12 public education, but take different approaches. The House Appropriations and the Senate Finance and Appropriation Committees went in different directions on pay raises for teachers and other public employees. Recall, former Governor Northam proposed the 5% raises in each of the two-year budget. The House proposed to split the proposed increase between 4% raises and 1% bonuses in each year, while the Senate kept the 5% raises and added $1,000 bonuses for SOQ positions only, with no required local match. The House supports eliminating the 2.5% sales and use tax on groceries and backfilling with state revenues, the 1% for share for public education and the 1% share to localities. The Senate also backs eliminating 1.5% of the sales and use tax on groceries, leaving the 1% local portion untouched. It proposes to use state funds to replace money from the sales tax that would be distributed to school divisions. Both House and Senate make K through 12 public education their top priorities, including restoring state funding of some school support positions that the General Assembly had capped in the SOQ in 2010 because of the revenue losses during the big recession. The House included funding over two years to help school divisions pay for a full-time principal in every school, one assistant principal per 400 students, and reading specialist staffing standard of one reading specialist for every 550 students in K through three. They also include funding to support startup grants for lab schools. The Senate proposed to increase state funding of school support positions as that provides a step forward eliminating the funding cap, and also funding to provide a reading specialist staffing standard of one specialist for every 550 students in K through three, with the flexibility to allow these specialists to work with students in grades four through six. Other Senate recommendations include funding to provide $5,000 recruitment incentives for teachers filling vacancies in hard-to-fill positions or hard-to-staff schools, funding to support existing before and after-school or summer learning programs, as well as funding to support statewide efforts to increase our educator workforce and teacher residency programs. The House proposes to use state tax funds and money from the literary fund to establish a loan rebate program that would leverage up to $2 billion in bonds to help localities replace or modernize school buildings, and that includes establishing a school construction fund. And the Senate endorsed former Governor Northam's proposal of $500 million in state funds for the same purpose. The Senate has approved five bills to help localities with school construction and modernization, including the creation of a school's construction fund. So it is said that this will be the largest education bill ever, so stay tuned as bills and money become final. This next slide summarizes the funding for compensation presented in the superintendent's estimate of needs. We just wanted to give you a visual of what we've already presented to you, to reacquaint you and the public with this information, and you'll see all the 5% raise, the investment in the health insurance, the insurance plan, the increase in the sub-rate, reclassification of various positions, increased allowances for advanced degrees, and converting 10-month custodial positions to 12-month. This final part of the presentation covers a high-level update of our federal pandemic relief funding. Just a reminder that the division must consider if the use of funds is intended to prevent, prepare for, or respond to the COVID-19 pandemic, including impacts on the social, emotional, mental health and academic needs of students. You can see the other areas to consider, with the point being that we do have limitations on the allowable uses of these funds. This slide just reiterates the three major ESER fundings we have received, the dollar amounts associated with each of those awards, and the expiration date of those awards. Now, we're going to go into each of those major awards really briefly. They are lists, they are broken down by categories and kind of give you ideas of what these funds are being spent on. They are in our approved applications. They're broken down for like personnel benefits in ESER I. You'll see the additional staff or modified schedules, the class allowances, there were stipends, there was a COVID-19 assessment team, there were additional funding for school nurses to support community vaccination efforts. Under purchase contracted services, you see the HVAC systems, the cleaning, disinfection, and installation replacements in schools. We had online student assessment subscriptions and resources for students, technology to support remote work for employees. We had the purchase and installation of audiovisual technology for schools, and we had roof repair and case work replacement in schools listed above. Under materials and supplies, there were portable hotspots for students, HVAC materials and supplies, contactless bottle filling stations, the Ring Central Call Center. We had technology devices for students and employees, interactive whiteboards, PPE, and supply kits for students. We also had protective partitions to promote social distancing, sanitation supplies for buses, schools and facilities, medical supplies for school clinics, and the technology and supplies needed for our COVID health assessment team. And under the capital outlay category, we had HVAC upgrade and maintenance for Kimsville Elementary, Baystate High, Indian Lakes Elementary, and Plaza Annex. I will say too, ESER II and ESER III, you will see some of these items repeated over as that funding is built into each of these pots of money. So I don't want to go read into a lot of this again, but you will see on ESER II, we started with the support for Virtual Virginia. We still have the health assessment teams. We had stipends for bus driver recruiters, teacher stipends, retention incentives for the critical shortage areas that was brought to you, the retention incentive for teachers. Under contracted services, we had Zoom video conferencing license, subscriptions for eBooks to expand student access. There were letters training, software licenses for e-hall pass, contracted services with CHGD to expand education around mental health needs, and other charges with the monthly rate for the hotspots to provide internet access to students. Under materials and supplies, we had upgraded devices and peripherals for teachers. There were PPE, textbooks and related materials for professional learning. We had the hand sanitizer, disinfectants, all the things that we incurred a lot of during this whole period of time. We're cafeteria tables to accommodate social distancing and upgraded devices for classrooms. Under capital outlay, we also had the purchase of commercial washer and dryers for seven schools, and this is associated with the additional cleaning and the supplies needed for that. Under ESER III, again, you will see some of the same ideas that were in ESER I and ESER II. We did expand, we think, we still have stipends, we still have family outreach representatives, we had an additional ESL teacher, there's the stipends for bus drivers, tutoring, contact tracers, that was one of the things that brought in on ESER III. We had the daily site-based subs. We were able to increase the teacher's subpay $30 a day with this funding. We had staffing for the vaccination clinics, retention incentives for the teachers, that was split between ESER II and ESER III, workshop pay for tutors, and concurrent stipends for Virtual Virginia Beach teachers. Under contractual services, we have all the things for students, for learning tools, software licenses, translation services, subscriptions, instructional software, you'll see some of those listed there. There were design fees and contracted service for HVAC roof and other repair projects. We had tutoring services, contracted services with communities and schools. Again, you see the Zoom video. We had contact tracing software and licenses. In internal services, we had bus fuel for summer school transportation. Under other charges, we had the hotspots monthly rate and the internet access subsidiary for students. Under materials and supplies, we upgraded additional devices for teachers in classrooms. We had cafeteria tables and seating furniture for social distancing. We had instructional supplies, again, all the hand sanitizer and those types of things. We had the replacement things, air purifiers, PPE, and again, material supplies for HVAC. And again, under capital outlay, there were HVAC and other repair projects. So we just wanted to give you a kind of a rundown of all the things that are on these, coming out of this funding. It seems that these questions come up on a regular basis, and those things, those are the items that we are actually expending funds on in order to do under the allowable uses for this funding. So items of note, this is just to provide context and clarification on items that also come up on a regular basis. One of those areas is reversion funds. We know trying to get reversion funds approved from FY '21 for appropriation in FY '22. These are one-time funds, and they are re-appropriated to the division in the current fiscal year. So they are appropriated to us for this fiscal year, and they're not part of the FY '23 operating budget. Same goes with reversion funds for CIP projects. They do impact the CIP project timeline, and so by moving that, allowing those to be completed in a more timely basis, they are likely to be reflected in your summary sheets that you see. And again, ESER funds, they're not funds the division receives upfront. Those funds, we are giving grant awards, we actually book budgets, and then we upfront those costs, and then we ask for reimbursement, meaning the division curves the expenditures initially. We file reimbursements with the Virginia Department of Education, and then those funds come back to us to reimburse us. If those funds, by chance, do not get spent for the purposes of which they're intended by the end of the war period, they are not returned to anybody. It's just that we didn't spend them and we didn't ask for reimbursement. I will tell you for many years in this division that it is our policy and our philosophy that we do not let those funds go unspent. We use them for the things that we need and for the uses they're used for. So that concludes the presentation. Be glad to answer any questions. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll turn it over to Jack.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
I just have three slides, and then we'll bring her back up to answer. And the format that we'll go through is, we had some questions from the last brief, so I'm just going to address the questions that came out from the last brief. So the first one was related to, and the two questions are kind of related to each other. So the first one came out was, what projects are included in the $28.1 million for renovation or replacement for energy management? That's CIP 1-001. So the $28.1 million that was being referenced was the programmed funding, so that's kind of what I'll call the total number. And that is comprised of the appropriated to date, which is 11.2, 11.3-ish, and then the current budget for this year, which is 1.9 million, and then the rest of the funding through the six-year CIP, and that's all in the book. You can kind of see it lined out there. So appropriations to date, 11.3 million roughly. And you can see on this slide, things that are included. So retrocommissioning at eight schools, so that's for heating and air conditioning type of equipment. When you commission a school, you do some detailed analysis to make sure that it's delivering airflow and cooling and heating in the way that it's designed to do. So retrocommissioning is essentially the same thing. Think of it kind of like a tune-up, and we've done that on eight schools. We've done lighting replacements at eight fields, including football, baseball, and softball fields, HVAC testing, adjusting and balancing at three schools, the boiler and cooling tower replacements and upgrades at one school, cooling tower replacement at another school, and then a windows replacement at a school. And then part of that question is, what's the priority for what's next? So down at that bottom bullet there, there was a bid that we put out for those three schools, Lincoln Park, Newcastle, and SeaTac Elementary Schools. We received it back and it was above budget, and we value-engineered it, and we couldn't get there. So it's going to need to be put back out for bid again, which will be end of summer, end of fall, when we'll be able to get a new bid for that one and then be able to go complete the work. So that's what that, that was in reference to, all right, what is the $28.1 million going to? The other part of that question seemed to be, all right, well, how does that compare to this other one, which is the energy performance contracts, Phase II, which is CIP 1-016? So the first one, you could kind of hear, based on the way that I described what happened with the boilers at those three elementary schools, that it's a design, you bid it, and then they come out and build it, they do the construction. So energy performance contracts are, you hire a vendor, they come and they do a detailed analysis, excuse me, and then they recommend what analysis, excuse me, and then they recommend what changes can be made to improve energy management, and then they're obligated by the contract to actually achieve the energy savings that they said that they were going to achieve. So when that CIP was built, it was deemed more appropriate to be able to closely follow those that kind of fell into that model, to use that as a separate CIP fund, and that's why it's separate from that one. Last question that came up was related to, good catching, the difference, the way that it's worded in the book between our playground equipment and our tennis courts. So the agreement is with the city and Parks and Recreation that we are going towards a 50-50 share for both tennis courts and for playground equipment. There's been some years that it hasn't worked out, and then fortunately for this year, they have the American Rescue Plan Act funding, and they intend to fully fund Green Run High School, and they're also doing several of our playgrounds. So what that means is, we can move forward more quickly to be able to do some of those fixes, and, you know, it's been a couple of years since we came and we talked about playgrounds. I think it kind of blew everybody's minds at how expensive they were, and we felt like we were behind and not be able to make much progress. This certainly helps us out, that participation from the city and that grant funding to help us move things along a little bit more quickly. So that's all I have. I will bring Crystal Black up and turn it over for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Mrs. Manning?
Yeah, so, Mr. Freeman, thank you so much for answering those questions from the last meeting. I appreciate that. Ms. Page, the, you said we get reimbursed the ESER funds. How long does it normally take us to get those back?
Usually, we file reimbursements on a quarterly basis for those fundings, and accountants and business services will prepare those reimbursements, and they're filed electronically. Staff at VADOE can be short, so the turnaround time varies, but we track all of the revenue that comes in, make sure that it gets posted correctly, and matches the reimbursement request that we put in.
And is it usually from the time you send it? Is it a couple weeks, a couple months?
Oh, it's probably, it could probably be three or four weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Page, can I, with respect to the medical, the health insurance premiums, in past conversation, we've been talking percentages. Can you provide some actual dollar figures for the benefit of our staff and teachers on how this translates?
So at this point, Mercer is currently working on what those rates look like. Because our health plans are done of different tiers, they have to actually go in and spread that properly through the tiers, especially in the POS plan. So they are working on the actual rates at this time. So I don't really have actual rates at this point. That'll go into effect in January.
So if you can just repeat the general ballpark percentage is?
So where, the way it's looking is between like a 40% to 50% reduction in those employee rates. That will put us on the POS plan. We were trying to get in line on second ranking and align our rates more with Norfolk, but they won't be the same rates as Norfolk again, because it's the spread of that tier over those tiers, that investment. High deductible, we're going into the six because that plan needs to have more plan design changes in order to move us up into the rank. And we did do an investment on the retirees side to try to get those rates down about 43%.
Thank you. Anything else right now, colleagues? While you're here, if you can just remind everybody of what's ahead and when we're going to be actually voting on the budget, and the timeframe for any other questions.
So March 1st, we have a special meeting, where I hope at that point in time, we'll be able to give you any updates coming out of the General Assembly. They probably will not be done. I think they're scheduled really to be done more like March 12th. And then the governor, I think, has till April 11th to do his final action. But we are hoping that you all will get any information you need and questions answered so that we may have an approval on the March 1st special board meeting. We were informed today that we are tentatively scheduled to present to City Council on April 19th. I don't have, I think it's at 2:00. The way the city's doing it now, it looks like every department is going to be requested to make a presentation to City Council regarding their budget requests. Some are as short as 15 minutes, others are 30 minutes, ours is 30 minutes. So again, it's tentatively right now scheduled for April 19th at 2:00.
So the calendar we approved, that's why I asked the question. I thought when I looked earlier, was I looking in the wrong place, that it said, when we, it said March 8th, because we started this process a little later?
There is a March 8th meeting if needed. So if we're still, if you're still having questions and still trying, and we're still trying to work through numbers, or we're still trying to, yes, we still can go through March 8th.
So it's?
That'll be a regular board meeting.
But we're allowing the possibility for action on the 1st, is what you're telling us? Just so we're all clear on that. So the time is of the essence there. But we certainly, as you had reiterated earlier in past meetings, we can go, if we needed to, we could go to March 8th.
Correct.
All right. So everybody's clear on that? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just make a comment?
All right, English, ESL, English as a Second Language Program or Comprehensive Evaluation? And welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melvick, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. I'm Dr. Allison Bach, a program evaluation specialist with the Office of Research and Evaluation. This evening, I'll provide an overview of the key findings and recommendations from the comprehensive evaluation for the English as a Second Language Program. The evaluation report you received in your agenda materials provides additional details. The purpose of the ESL program is to prepare English learners to be college and career-ready through integrated content-based language instruction. The program aims to develop students' English language proficiency so that they will have access to the same educational opportunities as all students. The ESL program is based on standards developed by WIDA, the World Class Instructional Design and Assessment Consortium, and EL-related federal and state regulations. During 2020-2021, 1,768 students received ESL services. These EL students spoke 70 different languages. As a reminder, two previous evaluations were conducted focused on implementation of the program. The comprehensive evaluation for the 2020-2021 school year focused on the program's operation, student characteristics, extent to which goals were met, and stakeholder perceptions. In addition, the evaluation included the impact of the pandemic and addressing actions taken regarding the recommendations from the year-two evaluation. Surveys were sent to staff, EL students in grades four through 12, and parents of all EL students. Response rates and numbers of respondents are shown on the slide. Student and parent surveys were translated into the four most frequent non-English languages and provided when appropriate. 32% of the completed parent surveys were translated versions. EL student data were also obtained from the data warehouse, including demographics and English proficiency. In addition, school usage of the division's interpretation services was obtained. The first step for identifying EL students is through the home language survey provided to parents when enrolling their child. If a parent indicates a language other than English, the student is assessed using one of two screeners to determine English proficiency. Students who are deemed to not be English proficient are eligible for ESL services. Due to difficulties with screening students in person during the pandemic, ESL teachers could interview parents and students to determine whether the student should be presumed to be an EL student until screening was possible. Overall, 572 students were considered to be presumptive EL students at one point during the school year. Upon screening, 63% of these students were determined to be eligible for ESL services. In the spring, EL students are assessed to monitor their English language development and determine their eligibility for services the following year. Elementary and middle school ESL instruction was predominantly provided through the push-in model, where ESL teachers supported classroom instruction, which occurred for both in-person and virtual EL students. To facilitate these services, it is recommended that EL students be clustered in classes. Survey results indicated that 43% of elementary school ESL teachers and 17% of middle school ESL teachers agree that students were effectively clustered in classrooms. Elementary school and middle school ESL teachers also worked with students in small groups as needed following the pull-out model. At the high school level, students received services through ESL courses. Two ESL teachers exclusively taught all virtual EL students at the high school level. One recommendation from a prior evaluation was to expand the availability of ESL instructional materials and resources. Various instructional materials available to all ESL teachers were purchased during the 2020-2021 school year. Overall, 79% of ESL teachers and 69% of classroom teachers agreed that the instructional materials available to them were appropriate for the EL students they taught. There were increases in comparison to the previous year with an increase of nearly 50 percentage points for ESL teachers. During 2020-2021, 43 full-time ESL teachers provided instruction to EL students. This was an increase of 12 ESL teacher allocations in comparison to the previous year. As shown on the slide, although ESL teachers had low agreement with statements about caseloads and time, there were increases in agreement percentages in comparison to the previous two years. Over the past three years, 39% of ESL teachers have agreed that students receive all services that are needed. A total of 1,768 students received ESL services, which was an increase of 44 students in comparison to the previous year. These students made up approximately 3% of the student population. The majority of these students were in elementary school. In comparison to the division, a higher percentage of EL students received instruction in person. Two additional groups of students were monitored through the ESL program. A total of 157 students' parents opted them out of services. Though these students opted out of instructional services, they were monitored quarterly and participated in access testing. An additional 466 former EL students had previously attained English proficiency within the last two years and were monitored bi-annually. Data were also collected to assess the program's first goal on professional learning and collaboration. All ESL teachers participated in professional learning to increase their instructional effectiveness with EL students, and 34% to 35% of classroom teachers indicated they participated in professional learning to increase their understanding of and capacity to teach EL students. For classroom teachers, this was a decrease compared to the previous year. Additional data showed that 83% of ESL teachers and 74% of classroom teachers agree that ESL-related professional learning enabled them to meet students' needs. As shown by the figure on the slide, low agreement percentages were found for items related to collaboration between ESL teachers and classroom teachers. However, in comparison to the previous year, there were increases in agreement percentages for both groups on both items. The second goal was that the ESL program will be student-centered and provide EL students with a variety of choices and opportunities to help students reach their goals. Selected results showed that 92% of EL students agree that they were learning and doing things in school that were matched to their needs and interests. In addition, in comparison to the division, similar percentages of former EL students who had reached English proficiency within the last four years were enrolled in an advanced course, completed a CTE program, earned an industry certification, and enrolled in TCE. The third goal is that the parents of EL students will be provided with supports and services to enable them to support and participate in their child's education. A recommendation from a prior evaluation was to develop a plan to provide translation and interpretation services. Beginning in the 2019-2020 school year, translation and interpretation services were available for staff to use when needed to communicate with parents of EL students. Staff can submit school or division documents to be translated for families with a two-to-three day turnaround. To use the phone interpretation service, staff call the toll-free Voyance phone number, enter the VBCPS account number and their school's PIN code, and select the language needed. The interpreter then calls the parent. This interpretation service is available to staff 24 hours a day, 7 days a week if needed. Phone interpretation usage data showed that 82% of schools throughout the division used the interpretation service at least once during 2020-2021. Of the 269 parents of EL students who responded to the survey, at least 88% agree that their child's school informed them about their child's progress in English and academics, as well as that they understood information from the division. One student outcome goal was that the ESL program will foster EL students' social and emotional development to support students as they become confident learners who feel part of their school community. Selected results showed that most EL students agree that they worked with others in a group, had positive relationships with peers, teachers, and administrators, had a sense of belonging to their school, and felt that school was a welcoming place to learn. EL student agreement percentages were similar to or higher than the division's student agreement percentages regarding the items noted on the slide. In comparison to the division, to the division, lower percentages of EL students consistently attended school and had fewer than six unexcused absences during 2020-2021. The second student outcome goal was that EL students will attain English proficiency in listening, speaking, reading, and writing. VDOE provided the required proficiency level gains on the access test for EL students depending on students' current grade levels and previous year's access test score. Although VDOE provided targets for the percentages of EL students who should meet the required gains, the requirement was waived for 2020-2021. The figure on the slide shows the percentages of students who met the required proficiency growth over the past three years, as shown by the different colored bars, by grade level group, as shown by the three sections of the graph, and by proficiency level group. Overall, there were declines in the percentages of students showing their required growth in comparison to the previous years, with the exceptions of students in kindergarten through second grade in the highest proficiency group, and students in grades six through 12 in the middle proficiency group who showed increases. To some extent, the decreases may be due to the impact of the pandemic. Overall, across all grade level and proficiency level groups, 50% of EL students showed the required growth from 2019-2020 to 2020-2021. A comparison by instructional setting showed that a slightly higher percentage of in-person EL students showed the required growth than the virtual EL students. Satisfaction data showed that high percentages of EL students, parents, and administrators were satisfied with the program, while somewhat lower percentages of classroom teachers at all levels and ESL teachers at the elementary school and middle school levels were satisfied. Although not shown on the slide, although not shown in the figure on the slide, in comparison to 2019-2020 data, there were increases in satisfaction for all staff groups at all levels. Based on the results of the evaluation, it is recommended that the ESL program continue with modifications noted in the following recommendations. Recognizing the school division continues to experience the impact of the pandemic, it is recommended to continue working on areas noted in the year-two evaluation, such as clustering EL students in the classrooms at the elementary school and middle school levels, communication and collaboration between ESL and classroom teachers, and professional learning for classroom teachers of EL students. The third recommendation is to conduct an evaluation update during 2021-2022 focused on the progress of EL student English language development, academic performance of former EL students compared to non-EL peers, and progress related to the comprehensive evaluation recommendations. At this time, Dr. Nicole DeVries, Director of K-12 and Gifted Programs, will share the administration's response.
Thank you.
Thanks, Allison. Good evening. The administration agrees with recommendation number one, as well as continuing the ESL program with modifications noted in recommendations two and three. As part of the administration's response, I'd like to take this opportunity to provide an overview of the ESL program itself, as well as some of the areas we are working on strengthening. I'd like to begin by reviewing information about the ESL program from last year, the 2020-2021 school year, since that is the year for which the evaluation was conducted. It's important to note that the ESL is a federally monitored program through Title III, and therefore has compliance considerations for instructional services. We continue to see an enrollment increase in our English learner population as we have for the past several years. Our top four languages continue to be Spanish, Tagalog, Mandarin Chinese, and Vietnamese, with Spanish being the top spoken language other than English. Last year, VBCPS staffed 43 full-time ESL teachers, 25 at the elementary level, nine at the middle school level, and nine at the high school level. This slide describes the current instructional model in place at each level. At the elementary level, the ESL teacher provides push-in, direct instruction, and they also pull students out into small group instruction as deemed necessary by the ESL teacher to meet student needs. There has been a change to the middle school instructional model this year. Over the past several years, middle school has primarily had a push-in model. Through teacher feedback collected over the past two years, teachers expressed the desire and need to include a dedicated ESL resource spell for those English learners who have lower English proficiency levels and need more support. With that in mind, the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year has been the first year we implemented a hybrid instructional model. In this model, the ESL teacher teaches ESL resource classes for each grade level and pushes into core classes to support those English learners with higher proficiency levels. We will continue to tweak this model, including the curriculum and curriculum resources for the ESL resource class based on teacher feedback at the middle school level. At the high school level, direct instruction takes place through an ESL course. Students who qualify for ESL services are scheduled for an English as a Foreign Language I, English as a Foreign Language II, English as a Foreign Language III, and/or ESL Effective Reading courses. Students earn world language credits for the English as a Foreign Language courses, and English as a Foreign Language III was added just this year for the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year. For ESL Effective Reading, students receive an ESL elective credit. We also have the newcomer program at the high school level for those students who meet the qualifying criteria. In Virginia Beach, that criteria is an English proficiency level of one point zero to one point nine, and they must have a gap of two years or more in their formal education. This program is housed at Lanstown High School. In addition to these classes, we have started to build a cadre of courses that focus on sheltered instruction in order to ensure that high school English learners have optimal opportunity to take credited courses besides elective credit courses toward graduation. Sheltered instruction is specifically designed for English learners. The content is taught by a teacher duly certified in ESL and the content area or by a team of teachers in which one is certified in the content area and the other is certified in ESL. For example, at Lanstown High School, newcomer students take a sheltered environmental science class in which the ESL teacher and an environmental science teacher teach together to make the content and language accessible to students. Likewise, some English learners at Kempsville and Lanstown High Schools take a sheltered English IX class, taught by the ESL teacher who is also certified to teach English. Next year, we plan to add more opportunities for sheltered instruction so that English learners can take as many credited courses toward graduation as possible. We will continue to communicate with principals regarding the importance of clustering English learners so that ESL teachers can maximize instructional time. As English learner enrollment continues to increase, it becomes more challenging for schools to effectively cluster English learners, and ESL teachers have had an increase in the number of classrooms that they have to work across in multiple schools. This also makes it challenging for ESL teachers to meet the required instructional minutes. We continue to meet with ESL teachers to discuss and address these challenges. There is an increase in agreement for both ESL and classroom teachers that they were able to effectively collaborate with one another. We believe this is due in part to the decrease in caseload for the two thousand and twenty-one school year because of the additional twelve staff who were approved by the school board, and in part due to the unique COVID scheduling last year in which teachers had a dedicated planning day on Mondays, enabling the ESL and classroom teachers more time to connect. Although Monday planning is no longer available, we continue to seek opportunities for increased collaboration. Dedicated collaboration time continues to be a challenge because of ESL teacher caseloads and the need to work across grade levels and schools. We anticipate that English learner enrollment will only continue to increase, and ESL teachers will continue to have the challenge of effectively meeting all students' needs across the many classrooms and teachers with whom they work. Our goal to the greatest extent possible is to decrease administrative tasks for ESL teachers and to keep the number of schools they work across as few as possible in order to increase instructional time with students. For this to happen, we will need additional staffing and have requested additional staffing allocations for ESL for the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three school year to address both challenges of clustering and collaboration time. During two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year, we increased professional learning opportunities for both ESL teachers and general classroom teachers. We continued these opportunities this year. These are optional sessions for classroom teachers to attend, and unfortunately, attendance has been low. We continue to develop professional learning opportunities for classroom teachers, and will explore ways in which we can increase teacher engagement. Last school year, we implemented a new ESL teacher mentor program to assist the many new ESL teachers through their first year of teaching, especially under such challenging circumstances. This proved to be a valuable addition to the professional learning for ESL teachers. While we weren't able to continue it in its official capacity this year because we were not able to pull teachers out during instructional hours, new ESL teachers did have an opportunity to meet weekly with the ESL instructional specialist, and this proved to be a valuable time for them. We plan to resume the new ESL teacher mentor program in its formal capacity next year. The administration agrees that the additional evaluation update for the, for two thousand and twenty-two, specific to the progress of English learner students, English language development, and academic performance, is appropriate. We faced several unique circumstances regarding instruction due to COVID in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, which include students experiencing an increased time out of the classroom. Some L students chose to receive all virtual instruction. Not all English learners took the annual language proficiency assessment, and the schedule of the annual language proficiency assessment was modified in order to adhere to COVID mitigations. We feel these challenges contributed to some English learners not making significant gains in language proficiency. With more normalized instruction and assessment practices in place this year, we expect to see more English learners making proficiency gains. We're proud that with the support of the school board and the tireless efforts of ESL teachers and our ESL administrative team, we've continued to strengthen the VBCPS ESL program. We look forward to continuing these collaborative efforts across stakeholder groups to help our English learners be future-ready. I am joined by my colleagues from Planning, Innovation, and Accountability, as well as Kathleen Kahunuchak, our Title III ESL coordinator, and we welcome any questions you have.
Thank you, Dr. DeVries. We'll start with Mrs. Manning and then Mrs. Malnick.
Okay, thanks. The newcomer program, how many students are in that?
Right now, I think we have about thirteen, thirteen.
Okay. And, and there, that's at Lanstown, so they could be coming from all different parts of the city, correct? Okay, and then we have a significant increase in our budget on this line item for ESL this year, and so I'm trying to understand our numbers. And I know you gave us from two thousand and twenty-one. Do you happen to know what our total numbers of students are for this school year?
We're currently sitting at two thousand and eighty-four students.
Wow, wow, that's a huge increase over last year. Are those primarily coming from South, South America?
Yeah, various countries, but I can tell you that we do have a large population coming from our Central American countries.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Malnick, then Ms. Owens.
Not knowing this, but there was a collective head nod, and I don't know if you could hear us, about the the English as a Foreign Language credit for, we've always had that. Right? Because I'm not sure that we knew that, so we all kind of looked at each other up here, so.
So that students can receive credit for taking English as a foreign.
This is their foreign, okay, got it, okay. All right, anything related to that that you, I mean, okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Owens.
Yep, I have, I guess maybe two questions. On the, I don't know, slide five, where it surveyed elementary and middle school teachers, ESL teachers, about the agreement that students were effectively clustered. Actually, there was another one that said students had their needs. Maybe slide eight, with the, where we're asking ESL teachers, they feel like they collaborated to meet the students' needs. Does the challenge seem to just be the staffing and the just time to get together and to have that collaboration? Is that where we're coming up with that?
Yeah, so I think, you know, there are several challenges. One is that we have this, we continue to see increased enrollment, and so, you know, that just, just the sheer quantity of students coming in, we have to keep up with that. The other part is that because of the staffing numbers we currently have, teachers, ESL teachers are working across schools. And so at any given time, you know, we were able to reduce the number of schools they, they work across. It's, it's a challenge particularly at the elementary level. With the twelve new staff that we got a couple of years ago, we were able to decrease that. But then as enrollment grows, that becomes an issue again. And with teachers having to work across schools, they are pushing into sometimes thirty teachers' classrooms within a week. And so to collaborate with thirty teachers becomes essentially, you know, very overwhelming.
Thank you, and I know that you mentioned you guys are requesting additional staff. Did you tell us the number of additional teachers that you guys are requesting? And I'm just curious then if Dr. Spence can weigh in on where we're looking on our budget for having those additional staff?
So the budget request had eight additional staff requested.
Great.
And there are eight positions in the budget.
Perfect. Great, we want to get that staff out there too.
How are they, how will they be allocated, or is that something that will be determined?
So, oh gosh.
We haven't made a final determination yet.
Yeah, so.
So that's generally driven by caseload, right? Which is determined as they're assessed, as they come in.
And so if the majority of, you know, new students are coming in at the elementary level, then we'd have to allocate more, obviously, at the elementary.
Okay, okay.
Mrs. Franklin. How much collaboration is done with the, the parents and the families of these students? I would think that for a big chunk of the student success is how much they are able to implement some of this at home as well. And so I'm just curious, do we have a lot of collaboration between the families, the parents, and, and the, the teachers?
So we have a lot, and I'll let Kathleen speak more to this, but we have a lot of, man, our ESL teachers are amazing with communication with those, with those families, and those families trust those ESL teachers because they're so, they're so good at keeping that line of communication open. Our ESL teachers do provide workshops for families, and I can let Kathleen speak a little bit more to that.
Sure, so our ESL teachers hold a family outreach meeting for families at each of their schools every semester. And they have really been utilizing the Voyance Phone Interpretation Services and also an app called Talking Points, which actually is a texting app that allows for translation, so that has been key in communicating with their families.
Do we have any kind of joint venture with maybe adult learning as well to, for these families to have a pathway for themselves to, to also learn the language?
So the Adult Learning Center does offer ESL classes for adult learners, and that is something that our ESL teachers often share at their family outreach meetings.
Yeah, so there's a segue for, for all these families, okay, thank you.
Okay, ladies, I think that does it for this evening. Thank you so much for all the information. Hello, so now we, this leads us to student response teams, otherwise known as SRTs.
Yes. Good evening again, Chairwoman Brey, Vice Chair Malnick, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. Again, I'm Dr. Allison Bach, a program evaluation specialist with the Office of Research and Evaluation. This evening, I'll provide an overview of the key findings and recommendations from the outcome evaluation for the student response teams process. The evaluation report you received in your agenda materials provides additional details. The purpose of the student response teams process is to assist students in being successful in the general education classroom through developing and monitoring interventions for students in need. SRTs provide, provided multi-tiered support to approximately three percent of the division's population, predominantly within three main areas, academics, attendance, and behavior. SRTs may also provide support with social and emotional concerns. The SRT process is built on staff collaboration and using data to make decisions regarding appropriate interventions and strategies to support students. As a reminder, an evaluation was completed in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen focused on the implementation of the initiative. The outcome evaluation was delayed in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty due to the impact of the pandemic on data availability, but a status update was provided to the school board. The two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one outcome evaluation focused on the extent to which the goals and objectives were met, as well as addressing the operational components, student characteristics, stakeholder perceptions, and the additional cost. Data collection included reviewing the SRT school guide, which provides guidelines for SRT implementation. All administrators, teachers, and other staff, such as school counselors, school improvement specialists, and nurses, were invited to participate in the staff survey. Students in grades eight through twelve who were referred to SRT and parents of students who were referred also were invited to take a survey. Overall response rates and numbers of respondents are shown on the slide. SRT data logs of students referred for SRT were submitted by schools each quarter to the Department of Teaching and Learning. Several steps were taken by the evaluation staff to prepare the data files and collect student outcome data from the division's data warehouse for analysis. Regarding the operational components, including the involvement of staff, results from the staff survey showed that at least eighty-three percent of each staff group who were surveyed agreed that they were familiar with SRT. As shown on the slide, the majority of administrators and other staff indicated they were involved with SRT during two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. From thirty-eight to sixty percent of teachers indicated involvement depending on level. This involvement may have included serving as an SRT member, referring students to or collaborating with the SRT, or implementing interventions. All remaining staff perceptions were based on these staff who indicated they were involved with SRT during two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. Regarding referral to SRT, students may be referred if their academic performance, attendance, or behavior interferes with their academic progress. Overall, there were more positive perceptions of the SRT referral process at the elementary school level, and for administrators and teachers regarding the referral process being clear and that consistent methods were used for referring students. In comparison to two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, agreement percentages increased or remained consistent for nearly all staff groups at all levels for both items. Most notably, high school administrator agreement increased from the sixty percent range to ninety-one percent. There were four goals related to the implementation of SRT. The first goal was that multidisciplinary SRTs led by an SRT administrator would collaborate during the SRT process to meet students' needs. Objectives for this goal focused on staff representation and collaboration, as well as parent and student involvement in the SRT process. As shown on the slide, at least eighty-four percent of staff at all levels agreed with items related to staff collaboration and representation. In addition, at least eighty-three percent of staff agreed that students were considered and involved, and parents were encouraged to attend the meetings held after students are referred to discuss interventions and strategies. In comparison to two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, agreement percentages increased or remained consistent for staff at all levels for all items shown on the slide. Of parents who responded to the survey, higher percentages of elementary school parents than secondary parents indicated that they received information that their child was referred to SRT, that they understood the purpose, were encouraged to attend meetings, knew where to find resources, and that their child's needs were considered. Of the secondary students referred to SRT who responded to the survey, low percentages of students agreed that they were involved with SRT and that their needs were considered, while over half indicated they did not know in response to these items. The second goal was that data will be monitored and reviewed throughout the SRT process. Overall, at least seventy-nine percent of staff at all levels agreed with items related to data monitoring, including collecting data before referral, referring when data showed concerns, goals aligning with interventions, and consistent use of referral indicators and intervention monitoring. Agreement percentages increased or remained consistent at all levels in comparison to two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Most notably, high school staff agreement increased six to eight percentage points for the survey items noted on the slide. In addition, from forty-seven to sixty-seven percent of secondary staff indicated use of progress monitoring data for selecting and adjusting interventions. In comparison to two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, there were decreases in the percentages of staff percentages of staff who indicated they used monitoring data for decisions. The third goal was that specific strategies and interventions related to the area of concern will be implemented as part of the SRT process. As seen on this slide, at least 86% of staff agreed that staff implemented strategies before referrals, and that interventions were individualized, research-based, and tiered, with the exception of high school staff regarding staff implementing strategies before referrals. There were increases in agreement percentages at all levels in comparison to 2018-2019. Most notably, there were increases of nine to 14 percentage points regarding interventions being research-based. The fourth goal was that professional learning opportunities will provide administrators and teachers with effective support and information to successfully implement the SRT process. Overall, at least 69% of staff in each staff group and school level indicated they participated in professional learning in the topic areas shown on the slide. Of those who indicated they received professional learning, at least 81% of staff at each level indicated the professional learning helped them understand each topic. In addition, from 64 to 84% of other staff, such as school counselors and school improvement specialists at the secondary levels, agreed that professional learning on topics related to interventions helped with understanding, including how to select interventions, implement interventions, and interventions on academics, attendance, and behavior. In total, 1,970 students were referred to SRT during 2020-2021. Approximately half of the referred students were in elementary school. Overall, 3% of the division's student population were referred to SRT. At the elementary school level, the majority of referrals were for academics, whereas at the middle school level, the majority of referrals were for attendance. High school referrals were for either academics or attendance. Compared to the division's population at each school level, there were higher percentages of students referred to and served by SRT who were economically disadvantaged and who were African-American. The student outcome goal was that the students served through the SRT process will demonstrate improvement within the referred area of concern. Data were examined for performance during the marking period 30 days before and 30 days after the initial SRT meeting date. Academic performance based on English and math grades is shown on the slide. Of the elementary school students who were referred for academics, 63% showed improved proficiency in at least one of their English standards. Lower percentages of elementary school students showed improvement in math. Nearly half of middle school students referred for academics showed improvement in their grade in English. Lower percentages of middle school students showed improvement in math, and high school students who showed improvement in both English and math. Additional analyses were conducted to compare average performance before and after receiving SRT support. In comparison to rece, before receiving support, English grades were statistically significantly higher after receiving support for all school levels. At the elementary school level, average performance moved from developing proficiency closer to proficiency after receiving support. At the secondary levels, average English grades moved from an E to between a C minus and D plus at the middle school, and from an E to a D at high school. Math grades were significantly higher after receiving support for English school, elementary school students only. Average performance also moved from developing proficiency closer to proficiency after receiving support. Comparisons by instructional setting showed that there were statistically significant increases in English grades for both virtual and in-person elementary school and middle school students, while there were statistically significant increases in math grades for in-person elementary school students only. When analyzed by instructional setting, there were no statistically significant increases at the high school level. Attendance rates of students referred for attendance were examined before and after receiving support. As shown on this slide, 75% of elementary school students showed improvement in their attendance rate, while somewhat lower percentages of secondary students showed improvement. Additional analyses comparing average attendance rates before and after receiving SRT support showed that students at all levels had higher attendance rates after receiving support, although improvement was largest for elementary school students. Comparisons by instructional setting showed that there were statistically significant increases in attendance rates for both virtual and in-person elementary school students, while there were significant increases for in-person students only at middle school, at the middle school level, and virtual students only at the high school level. Analyses for behavioral referrals were limited to elementary school students due to few secondary SRT referrals for behavioral reasons. In addition, analyses were limited to in-person elementary school students. When examining discipline referrals after receiving support, 22% of elementary school students showed improvement, while 71% had no change. However, many students with no change did not have a formal discipline referral prior to receiving SRT support. At least 79% of administrators and teachers at all levels and other staff at the elementary school level indicated they were satisfied with the SRT process at their school. Lower satisfaction was seen for other staff at the secondary levels. In comparison to 2018-2019, there were increases in satisfaction for nearly all staff groups at all levels, with a notable increase of 27 percentage points for high school administrators. In addition, of the students and parents who indicated they or their child received support through the SRT, 71% of students and 85% of parents indicated they were satisfied. Additional costs for SRT totaled $11,470 in 2020-2021, which included copies of three publications purchased for every school's SRT lead administrator as a resource for SRT. Activities related to SRT have been considered part of staff members' typical job responsibilities. However, beginning in the 2021-2022 school year, SRT coordinators were identified and will receive a supplement for their work on SRT. Based on the results of the evaluation, it is recommended that the SRT process be continued with modifications. The second recommendation is to continue to pursue alternative division-wide data collection methods to allow for more efficient and effective monitoring of students' progress and determining effectiveness. The third recommendation is to ensure parents of middle school and high school students referred to SRT are informed, informed and involved in the SRT process, as well as involving middle school and high school students. The fourth recommendation is to ensure interventions and data monitoring are implemented with fidelity at the secondary school levels to increase the effectiveness of the interventions. At this time, Ms. Adrian Day, Director of Student Services, will share the administration's response.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. The Office of Student Support Services concurs with the findings and recommendations from the Office of Research and Evaluation. The Office of Student Support Services has collaborated since January of 2021 with numerous offices and departments to continue to support the work of Compass to 2025. The student response teams, or SRTs, at each school have been in place for some time now. However, for the 2021-2022 school year, we have refined the work as SRT 2.0. SRT 2.0 is an enhancement of what we have been doing with SRT, which is a process involving school teams, problem-solving to address the needs of students. It involves collecting data and identifying interventions, which SRTs have been doing. It also includes developing a plan for interventions. This school year, the expectation is a higher level of consistency with these steps to include a stronger focus on data decision-making, evidence-based interventions, and tiered systems of support. The focus of SRT 2.0 for the 2021-2022 school year supports the recommendations and key findings shared earlier. In response to recommendation number one, the Office of Student Support Services will continue to collaborate with members of the Department of Technology, the Department of Teaching and Learning, the Department of School Leadership, and Planning, Innovation, and Accountability to enhance the SRT process to allow schools to be even more responsive to the individual needs of students. In response to recommendation number two, the Office of Student Support Services will continue to work to implement a data platform that may assist SRT lead administrators and SRT coordinators in collecting and analyzing data in a more efficient and effective manner as it relates to progress monitoring. In response to recommendation number three, the Office of Student Support Services will assist and support schools, specifically middle and high schools, with seeking input from parents and students on the SRT process. Additionally, the SRT Work Group, 2.0 Work Group comprised of various, various offices and departments and select administrators. We refine the SRT Process Guide, which will support schools with this recommendation. In response to recommendation number four, the Office of Student Support Services will continue to work with SRT lead administrators and SRT coordinators related to ensuring interventions are selected and monitored with fidelity. The SRT data log and resources and strategies to include information on the SharePoint site and the School, Schoology Group will assist schools with this recommendation. The Office of Student Support Services would also like to thank the Office of Research Evaluation, Dr. Janeky and Dr. Bach for the evaluation and the detailed report information. At this time, Dr. Bach and I are prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that. Colleagues, anybody? Mrs. Manning?
Thank you. I really appreciate recommendation number three. When I looked through the report earlier, I noted that there seems to be a disconnect with notifying parents, especially at the middle and high school level. Only 53% of middle school parents and 32% of high school said that they had been notified. Was that notified of the SRT meeting, or that their student was referred?
It could be a combination of both. And it could be the terminology where they did receive support and knew that they received support, but not definitely saying that it was the student response team that met with them. But definitely, we have put some things in place to be able to get a student, the student input and the parent or family input, so they're aware that this is actually the student response team process, and also that we're here to support you. And these are the things that we're able to support you with.
Gotcha. So, that would definitely help.
Whether or not they received notification, they may have, they just didn't know it was the student's. Exactly, exactly. So, we're working to make sure they, they're notified, they know what interventions will be used, and who will actually conduct the, the intervention. So, they'll, they'll have more detailed information.
It's imperative that we have that parent piece in there. So, okay, great. Thank you.
But along those lines, though, parents encouraged to attend meetings was actually very high. So, among our staff, that, you know, they're actually reaching out to parent, you know, that's what it appears to me. And parents are encouraged to attend, you know, at 99, and at 99% at the elementary and high school level, and 97% at the middle school level. So, thanks for that clarification.
No problem.
Mrs. Anderson?
So, the biggest discrepancy that I see on here, though, has to do with student outcomes in academics, especially at the high school, at the high school level. And so, but I realize at some point, you know, interventions usually have a better success in the elementary grades to begin with. I mean, that's just, it's just the way, the way that it is. The sooner you get to students who need help, the better. But, but only having 16% improvement, showing improvement on the high school level kind of bothers me, in that I feel like there's more that we need to do to intervene, to help those students. So, I was, especially in math.
Yes, and definitely, the SRT support is there, but schools have many other layers of support. If they see that the SRT interventions aren't working at the level that they should, they continue to support the family through other processes. I call other branches of the tree.
I think we're covered for now, then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. Now, we have our textbook adoption, digital resource, secondary English.
Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the Board, and Dr. Spence. I'm here this evening to provide you with the information regarding the Digital Resource Textbook Adoption Committee selection for the secondary English courses. The textbooks recommended for consideration are scheduled for implementation in the fall of 2022. Before presenting our recommendations, I would like to thank Kami Vanderson Jacob and Brittany Kearns, secondary English coordinators and committee members, for dedicating their time and efforts in choosing the best resources for our students. The first step in the textbook adoption process is always to do a thorough search of the OERs. In this case, there were not any OERs found which provided extensive, high-quality, and robust text in a variety of genres that align with the Virginia Standards of Learning. In addition, the proposed product offers students audio recordings, enrichment and extension activities, resources for English language learners, and other interactive components that enhance learning for students. The following search of OERs, the committee reviewed the digital textbook resources. The following are committee's recommendations for the secondary English digital resource. The textbook adoption committee and public comment selected actively learn as its first choice, choice, excuse me, for secondary English, grades six through 12, including honors and advanced classes, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses as well. The digital resources are aligned to the most recent 2017 SOLs, aligned by reading Lexile Levels, and consistent with interactive reading strategy initiatives by Virginia Beach City Public Schools. The product is visually appealing, easy to navigate for teachers and students, and the texts include diverse range of characters and settings unlike other textbooks reviewed by the committee. This product offers copyrighted material, including classic and contemporary novels, short stories, as well as current nonfiction. Finally, an added benefit is all science and social studies teachers will also gain access to texts grouped by content topics, including primary sources and more current texts. The online platform works seamlessly with student Chromebooks. The current books for these courses have been in use for eight years. This slide outlines the cost implications for the initial years, as well as discounts provided if adopted for three years. Based upon an estimated enrollment of 35,300 secondary students, achieve will cost $706,000 to implement year one. This is a rate of $20 per student. Years two and three will cost approximately $1.27 million. This is a rate of $18 per student. Thank you for your consideration of the committee's recommendations. I have with me this evening members of the textbook committee, Ms. Vanderson Jacob and Brittany Kearns, our English coordinators. We would be happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening.
If I, if I may just ask to start for the benefit of the public, to define OERs.
Oh, the...
I mean, it's an acronym for, we've had past sessions on these.
It's Open Educational Resources.
Resources.
Well, I just, I don't think most of the public knows what OERs are, which is why I asked you to spell it out.
They're open resources for students that are online, that are in use, like textbooks, but not textbooks. So, they're online resources.
And we have gone that route on a few occasions, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I think that's important to point out, but that you've ruled it out because of the lack of, well, you tell us here.
Well, the committee, yeah, the committee ruled that out. They didn't find any that were, they felt that matched our SOLs. But yes, you are correct. We have found some before that ha, we have used, and they have been a good resource for us. But the committee did not find that with this.
But I think it's important to note that it was considered and then rejected. So, thank you for taking the time.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So, Mrs. Manning?
Thank you. So, when we adopt textbooks, the public has an opportunity to provide input and even come in and see the textbook and review it. How do they review this online resource to provide feedback?
They had a committee, and I'll let...
Hi, good evening. So, for the public comment, we sent the info...
So for the public comment, we sent the information down to the Office of Media and Communications, and they put out the information via our website so parents could access it and they could look at both of the top two selections.
Okay, they can actually look at the material.
They had a demo account that they could do. We had a survey and a criteria rubric that we asked for them to give feedback.
Can we get a link to that? Because I wanted to look at it today and couldn't figure out how. So I'm sure if I can't figure it out, parents can't.
Sure, we can provide that to you.
Okay, yeah, if I could get that, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right, then we'll be, you'll be, this will be a consent next meeting, I assume. So thank you.
Yes.
And we'll follow up with any questions in the meantime.
Yes, and we'll get you that link.
Thank you. Okay, our final information item of the evening, our policy review recommendations. Welcome, Mrs. Lynetti.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Cami Lynetti, School Board Legal Counsel. And so I'll be presenting to you the recommendations of the Policy Review Committee meeting from February tenth of 2022. These are eight recommendations, and these come mostly, well, there's all of them, from Section Three, which is our business and non-instructional operations section. The first one is Policy Six Three Sixty-nine, which is contract maintenance. This was last reviewed in nineteen ninety-three. After looking through this and sending it to the procurement department, they indicated that this policy is no longer necessary because the terms and the way we handle our contract business maintenance contracts are handled through the procurement process and our procurement manuals, so there would no longer be a need for this policy. So the Policy Review Committee is recommending repealing this policy. Are there any questions on Three Sixty-nine? No questions on Three Sixty-nine. We'll move on to Policy Three Seventy, as equipment. Minor changes in here, primarily they were scriven changes in the first sections, correction department names, and also allowing in subsection C on the replacements, adding in that allowing the school division to do emergency repairs and when otherwise necessary, some conditions for that. That is in Section D. Those are the only recommendations to Policy Three Seventy. Are there any questions? Here are no questions. I'll move on to Policy Three Seventy-six. Transportation generally. The only change recommended in transportation generally is the final sentence that will read, "The school division may enter into agreements for vehicles that use alternative fuels as set forth by law and regulations." In 2020, there were some changes to the law allowing the school divisions to start implementing electric vehicles. You'll see some of that coming out in the future. Those are contracts that we are currently working on with the Department of Transportation, and I've studied the regulation down there. So we've gone ahead and added that in and added the legal reference to that particular type of transportation. Are there any questions about Policy Three Seventy-six? Moving on then to Policy Three Seventy-seven, transportation, non-transportation zones. There are some changes that happened in this particular section. Because we added an entire new paragraph to it, we went ahead and divided this into sections. There will now be a Section A, which will be called Establishment of Zones. Section B, which is Students with Disabilities. And Section C, this is the new law that was added in by the General Assembly last year that talks about the waiver for certain students. And this paragraph will now read, "If an established non-transportation zone excludes certain students who reside within a certain distance from the school at which they are enrolled from accessing such transportation, the superintendent designee shall establish a process for waiving on a case-by-case and space-available basis such exclusion and providing transportation to any student whose parent or legal guardian is unable to provide adequate transportation for his child to scan cold because the parent or legal guardian is providing necessary medical care to another family member who resides in the same household as evidenced by written explanations submitted by a licensed healthcare provider who provides care to such family members." This is a very, very specific piece of legislation that was added. And this sometimes happens in the General Assembly. Sometimes they create laws to deal with very specific situations. So we did go ahead and recommend adding this in, and you'll see the legal reference to this. This is a very specific situation that we obviously will handle on a case-by-case basis. If there are no questions on Three Seventy-seven? Again, the legal references are into this section. Policy Three Seventy-eight has to do schedules, routes, stops, traffic control plan, also in the transportation section. There are only minor scriven changes that you'll see in subsection B in there and a pulling out of the editor's notes. Otherwise, everything is up to date, and there are no recommendations for changes to Policy Three Seventy-eight. Are there any questions on Policy Three Seventy-eight?
I just was curious. So before, in the past, it looks like that the school board would be the ones that considered those requests for services, and now it's the superintendent or designee?
Are you going back to Three Seventy-seven?
No, I'm sorry. I'm looking at, I thought it was Three Seventy-eight. I apologize.
Is it the one we were talking about, waiver of certain students, or?
Oh, I don't know. I'm sorry. Right here, it's under Policy Three Seventy-eight, but...
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I just, Section B, schedule, established schedules. Yes, this question was asked before. When looking at that, we determined if we allowed it just to be the school board. In this particular section, requests for services, in addition to that, we'll give a special individual consideration in case of physical capacity of a student as established by a certificate. Our concern was, a lot of times this will come out of a student house. This condition will probably be a student with an IEP, a special, identified for special ed, or a student with a 504 condition that didn't meet the IEP condition, but also met the disability condition. The concern was that we have to wait to get this up to the school board. You might lose valuable time for that student. Sometimes we'll get a new student in, and if it takes us two or three weeks until you get it up to you, that would be two or three weeks would not make it honest to have that student get the transportation. They would be entitled to transportation if their IEP allowed it. It's unusual in a 504. We generally don't provide transportation. So in most cases, it's going to be a student with an IEP. And just so that we weren't holding that up, we allow the superintendent to handle that. Transportation is something that is, IEP team would consider, so that the whole team would consider that. My concern when looking at this and talking with the departments was that we don't want to hold a student up for two or three weeks to one of your meetings so we can get this taken care of. Are there any further questions on Policy Three Seventy-eight? Moving on to Policy Three Eighty, just a minor change, a scriven change, adding some wording there, pulling out the editor's note and adding an updated legal reference and changing the references. Are there any questions on Policy Three Eighty, which is school board on vehicles? If there are no questions on Policy Three Eighty, I'll move on to Policy Three Eighty-one, which is vehicle maintenance. The only recommended change in this particular policy is add the legal reference in there that has not been provided before. Are there questions on Policy Three Eighty-one? Under our last policy, which is Policy Three Eighty-six, there are only one scriven change that's made in subsection C, which talks about only students, school board offices, employees, and guests of school board shall be served in the school cafeteria. That is the only recommended change into Policy Three Eighty-six. Are there any questions on Policy Three Eighty-six?
I was just curious. What is the purpose of that change?
Because it said, "School board employees." You all are not school board employees, so if you wanted to go in visiting a school and you wanted to have a meal technically, you'd be violating the policy if you had something in the cafeteria. I've seen occasionally some of you were in during the school day, so I want to give you the opportunity because you're an officer, not an employee. I just want to clarify that you are not illegally getting a meal if you were at schools.
Gotcha. Okay. So we were possibly illegal before. Okay, gotcha.
We're not going to talk about that on camera. Thank you. Seeing no further questions, that will be the end of the recommendations, Policy Review Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Lynetti. All right, Consent Agenda. We have three resolutions this evening. So first take motions, and then we'll read the resolutions. Motion to approve the consent agenda, Mrs. Franklin, and second, Mrs. Felton. And we are starting with Read Across America.
Resolution Read Across America. Whereas the citizens of Virginia Beach stand firmly committed to promoting reading as the catalyst for our students' future academic success, their preparation for America's jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education of our youth grounded in the principle that education investment is key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life. And whereas National Education Association's NEA, Read Across America, a national celebration of reading on March the second, 2022, motivates students to read a variety of literature that are about everyone, for everyone. Now therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach calls on all the citizens of Virginia Beach to assure that every child is in a safe place reading together with a caring adult on March second, 2022. And be it further resolved that this body enthusiastically endorses NEA's Read Across America and recommits our community to engage in programs and activities that improve the reading abilities of all children. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board, adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this twenty-second day of February, 2022.
Thank you, Mrs. Riggs. And now Fine Arts in our Schools Month.
Whereas fine arts programs in Virginia Beach City Public Schools provide curricular, co-curricular, and extracurricular experiences in art, dance, music, and theater arts for all student members of the school community and for the Virginia Beach community at large. And whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach is cognizant of the importance of fine arts to all our students, not only while they are in school, but also throughout their lives. And whereas art, dance, music, and theater arts are now and have been a vital part of the curriculum and instruction of the public schools of Virginia Beach. And whereas the month of March has been designated as Music in Our Schools Month, Youth Art Month, and Theater in Our Schools Month by their national associations. Now therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach recognizes the month of March, 2022, as Fine Arts in Our Schools Month in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach expresses appreciation to our fine arts educators for enhancing our lives and the lives of our children through art, dance, music, and theater arts. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of the board, adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach, Virginia, this twenty-second day of February, 2022.
Thank you, Mrs. Melnick. And that brings us to our final resolution, National School Social Work Week.
Absolutely. Last, but certainly not least, National School Social Work Week, to be observed March sixth through twelfth. Whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools' social workers help identify and remove environmental barriers to learning, thus allowing students to reach their full potential. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools' social workers are committed to mobilizing family, school, and community resources to enable students to learn and fully benefit from their educational program. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools' social workers are valuable members of the multidisciplinary team serving schools, providing a wide range of services to the students, parents, and staff. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools' social workers use their expertise in child development, community resources, mental health, and crisis intervention to develop and implement interventions to support educational success. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools' social workers assist the most vulnerable children and adolescents, including children with disabilities, children living in homelessness, children living in poverty, pregnant teenagers, suicidal teens, truants, and others at-risk children. And whereas this shared approach to assisting students promotes students' learning and helps guide students to high school graduation and post-secondary experiences and the skills necessary to be productive citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach recognize the second full week of March, 2022, as National School Social Work Week in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board, adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this twenty-second day of February, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. So all in favor of the consent agenda, kindly show a raised hand. Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote. Thank you. Two action items this evening. We begin with the Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Motion to approve, Mrs. Riggs, and second, Ms. Owens. Any discussion? All in favor, please show a raise. Oh, Mrs. Hughes.
So as I read these, these are people who are in schools who would be moved out of the schools into administration? Is that correct?
Dr. Spence, there's a question about the...
Yes, ma'am. I'm working on that. No, right now, Ms. Cash and Crystal, you can help me out with this one, but I believe she's in the, Cash, sorry. She's in the Department of Budget and Finance, and Ms. Trotman is currently in the Department of Human Resources. Neither of them are school-based personnel.
Okay.
As you probably know, because I know we've communicated it, when we're making other administrative decisions right now, if they're classroom positions, they're frozen until those are filled.
And that was my question. I know there was some confusion when the descriptions were sent out, and it was redone. I just didn't see it after it was redone, so that's all I was checking on. That was my question. You answered it. Thank you.
All right, so all in favor, show a raised hand, please. Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote. Thank you. And Dr. Spence, do you have a few introductions for us?
I do, yes, ma'am. So we'll begin with Misty Cash, and I'm pleased to recognize her this evening. She has served with distinction here in Virginia Beach as a financial assistant and accountant, a budget analyst, senior accountant, principal accountant, all in the Office of Business Services and Budget Development. And most recently, as just noted, has been serving as a financial management specialist in the Department of Budget and Finance. And we're pleased this evening you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next coordinator of accounting in the Department of Budget and Finance. I'd also like to recognize Darnita Trotman. Ms. Trotman has taught and been a school counselor and department chair in Norfolk Public Schools, as well as a counselor, administrative assistant, and department chair here in Virginia Beach Public Schools. She was an assistant principal at Brandon Middle School, and most recently has been serving as a human resources specialist in the Department of Human Resources. And we're pleased this evening you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next Director of Employment Services in the Department of Human Resources. Congratulations to both of these administrators.
Okay, that brings us to action item number two, the school calendars for 2022, 23, and 2023, 24. Welcome, Dr. Saltner.
Point of order, we need to get a motion and a second to open up the presentation and discussion.
Thank you. All right. Motion to approve the section item, Mrs. Hughes, a second, Mrs. Holtz. All in favor, show, no, we're not voting. Okay.
Well, I mean, can you make the motion? I don't, I don't understand what we're, what the motion is because we have two, two different versions of the 22, 23 in front of us.
I'd recommend the motion is to vote on the two calendars, and then we'll be able to do a presentation and answer questions before you make any further decisions on that.
Which two calendars?
Well, two, you mean two years.
That's correct. You have two years' worth of calendars.
Is that what you meant, Mrs. Manning?
Well, I mean, that's not the proper way to make a motion, so that, I just want to clarify, because if we, if we're gonna, I mean, typically you make a motion, you second it, you have conversation, and then you vote.
Right.
So I don't know at this point what we would be voting on.
No, I backtracked that comment. When I started to say that, I said, no, I was just accepting the motion to open up the discussion.
Okay, so the motion is just to open discussion on the calendar?
Yes.
Okay.
We did have a first and a second to open this up. Help me, who's, who did I?
I have Miss Hughes and Miss Holtz.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Saltner.
Very good.
We are good.
Good evening, Chairman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the board, Dr. Spence. I returned to you this evening with the proposed calendars for the 22, 23, and 23, 24 school years. I'd like to remind you of the timeline that we worked with. And at the last meeting, you asked us to come back to you with a post-Labor Day calendar for 22, 23. And you cited a particular preference for Option Four when I last presented on February eighth. And you also asked for a pre-Labor Day calendar for the 23, 24 school year that closely aligned to our... to our proposed Option 1 from 22-23. You also asked that we looked at how we might provide two staff days for elementary conferences in November and two staff days in January for high school, who are transitioning to new classes as a result of flexible scheduling. This calendar was the one that was preferred by the board at the February 8th meeting. And rather than me reading those bullets, I'll give you a moment to just reflect on the highlights of these bullets. This is not the first time you've seen this calendar. I also know that the board asked us to explore options relating to having those two staff days in January. And our team did try, and we tried to get very creative with this, even looking at the possibility of two different calendars or marking-period calendars, one for elementary and one for secondary. We realized that attempting this caused more issues than it solved. Remember, we cannot distribute the staff days that occur at the beginning and the end of the year throughout this calendar without adding instructional days. I think you'll be happy to hear that we were able to resolve this issue with the 23-24 calendar, but were unable to do so with the 22-23. So this is the calendar that you preferred, and we were able to place that essentially, as you asked, with the exception of not being able to provide those days, two in November and two in January. But if you will allow me, I want to insert a surprise option for next year. It was not released to you prior, but it is very worthy of your consideration. So allow me to explain. I received a phone call this weekend and two additional emails asking why the calendar I just shared with you, Option 4, had two days on the end of the year, June 20 and 21, as a staff and flex day, when that one staff day could have been used for the heavy lift of Canvas training at the beginning of the year. Simply put, I couldn't agree more. And so I reluctantly came to work this morning and shared this last-minute suggestion with Dr. Spence and our senior staff. And all agreed, though not presented to you earlier, if it helps teachers, it should indeed be considered. So here it is. We think staff will like it too, as it allows staff the option of completing a flex day prior to the last day for students, June 16. And you had asked us about flex days. We simply placed the June 20 staff day on August 25 and shifted the flex day one day over. I like it, and I think our schools will like it too. Now that I've muddied the water, and I know I can confuse you with a calendar, let me pause to answer any questions you have on 22-23, but I think we've got it. Questions on 22-23?
So this is version two, as called in our packet.
That is correct.
Just for the benefit of my colleagues. So you're looking for Option 4, version two.
Do you have the larger?
You do, the larger calendars are behind... Keep scrolling for the larger. I think you're brilliant.
Can I get a hug?
And it's hard to argue with someone who says muddy the water.
And how do you spell that, Ms. Melnick?
Yes. We will not be using you in phonics in elementary school.
I think we got it with this version. Are there any other questions? Let's jump then to the 23-24. This option that you're looking at now is as close as we could possibly make it to the originally proposed Option 1 calendar, which means easing into pre-Labor Day start by starting just a few days earlier, four days earlier for students than they would have, versus starting a week or more earlier. So let's go over this calendar more closely, and I've broken that down for you. Start with July through September. There are no instructional days in July, typical. Then in August, the first teacher work day is August 21, and the end of the Teacher-in-Service Week, which is five days long, is August 25. Students begin school August 28. In September, you'll notice Friday, September 1, and Monday, September 4, are both holidays in observance of the Labor Day holiday. Recall, if we start prior to Labor Day, those two days must be off. Now October through December. In October, there is one staff day. November 2 ends the first quarter, and November 3 is a staff day. Additionally, anew this year, we are offering flex days during the school year as requested. This means that elementary staff who need a second day for conferences can use this day for parent-teacher conferences, whereas a secondary teacher may use this time for planning or for other needs. Students are not in school during either of these staff days. You'll see November 7 is Election Day, holiday for everyone. November 8, beginning of the second semester. Then November 10 is the day we observe Veterans Day. Wrapping up November is the Thanksgiving holiday, with everyone off three days prior to Thanksgiving. In December, the winter holiday break begins with an adjusted dismissal for all, December 21. Winter holiday begins December 22 and extends until the New Year. January through March. You can see we start with January 1 off, wraps up seven full weekdays for winter break, the 15th, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, a holiday for all. And January 26 ends the second quarter. And then again, you see the two staff days, one full staff day, January 29, and a flex staff day, January 30. Here is where secondary staff will probably choose to work due to the four-by-four, the new flexible schedule. And elementary staff, who probably did two days prior with the conferences in November, may use the flex day as they see fit. January 31 begins the third quarter. In February, we will recognize Presidents' Day, February 19, holiday for all. In March, staff day for everyone on March 4. And then, at the very end of March, an adjusted dismissal day. And believe it or not, this is the day before spring break. Easter comes very early. It's March 31st next year. Or this, not next year, two years out. Moving on to the last three months of the school year, April, May, June. In April, we start with spring day break during the first week of the month. April 12 closes out the third quarter and is followed by April 15, which is a staff day. April 16 starts the fourth quarter. That's our final quarter of the year. In May, Memorial Day on the 27th. And in June, we have the last day of school on June 14, which you'll notice is also an adjusted dismissal day for students. You'll notice there's not a staff day at the end of the school year. Staff days at the end of the year were questioned last time I presented this, and therefore teachers are given the afternoon of June 14, when students have an adjusted dismissal, to finalize grades for the year. June 14, last day of instruction for the standard 23-23-4 school year. Now, for your awareness, the Calendar Group did meet again last week and approve this calendar. And I'd be remiss if I did not conclude by acknowledging a letter each of you received from the Hotel and Restaurant Association. We acknowledge their concerns, but believe the benefits of the pre-Labor Day start outweigh this. Look at the days that we have given teachers for professional leave. We acknowledge as well the other benefits, which I've shared with you in the past, about our students getting a few days head start on IB, on other testing, SAT. And I'd also like to point out that the pre-Labor Day start aligns with more than 80% of the calendars around the state, and more closely with school start dates throughout our nation. Further, I would remind you, the majority of the parents in that survey, which I shared with you last time, 65% expressed support to start before Labor Day. And really, if you look at this calendar in actuality, our students will return only four days prior than past years. And they'll be available nights and weekends to the hotel and restaurant in Virginia Beach. They'll be available Friday and Monday, required holidays for the, Friday through Monday, I might point out. Our recommendation, despite this letter, remains the same, and I'll leave this in your hands to make these decisions. And I'll take any questions before asking you to vote on our calendars.
Thank you, Dr. Saltner. Mrs. Hughes, Mrs. Anderson, Mrs. Manning.
I really appreciate all the work that went into this. I am a fan of the earlier start, but with the two-year calendar, we did acknowledge that people had already, you know, made plans for the summer, whatever they are, jobs, vacations, that kind of thing. So I'm glad that we have the two-year calendar here that we start in early next year, and that those days were built in to help the teachers with the hybrid schedule. So thank you.
Thank you.
I like these. I think these are good, solid calendars.
I do, too. I'm going to pause if I can and say I was premature in turning this to you, and I wanted to point out that before, you have also seen some information on religious holidays from some of our religious leaders, and I want to make you aware that we plan to make our religious holidays and religious observations available to our public on our website, on our calendar page. It's a rotating calendar on the homepage. We'll also ensure that our schools are reminded to consider the list of observances when planning tests, as well as events and programs, and that they encourage student and family participation. So excuse my interruption with that.
Thank you for pointing that out. Right, Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you. I want to convey my thanks to you and to the Calendar Committee for taking my suggestion about adding flex days there on those staff days. I think that gives a little consideration to our teachers. And for the most part, our teachers will utilize that time, I'm sure, very effectively, and I really appreciate you doing that. I like the version two of your, of Option 4, and I'm... I do like this pre-Labor Day calendar. I will be supporting it a little reluctantly, though, because I do respect the fact that our Hotel Motel Association really, they let us know that they're not in favor of this. But at the same time, when you look at this pre-Labor Day calendar, you can't help but see how beneficial it will be for our students and staff of Virginia Beach. So I have to say that I'm going to have to vote in favor of this pre-Labor Day calendar as well. And I appreciate the fact that we're going to do it the two years out, so that we've given parents plenty of notice on here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. It's precisely what we wanted you to say. Thank you.
Mrs. Mary.
Yes, so thank you again to you and the staff that put this together. I do like your change on the version two, and I'm happy to support that. And I did ask the question about the Hotel Motel Association and Restaurant Association at our last meeting, and I didn't really have a lot of feedback on that as to what their reason was. And so we got a letter today from them. I've reached out to them. I didn't have time to talk with them over the phone. And I personally would like to have some time to actually speak with them on this topic prior to voting on it. And I would like to ask the board if they would be amenable to us just voting on the 22-23 calendar today and then deferring the 23-24 until our next regular meeting, which I believe is on March the 8th. That would be my preference, so that those of us who would like to reach out to these important stakeholders of ours to discuss it, because we also had another, we had another pre-Labor Day start as well, that I think started even earlier. So I don't even know if they're clear, you know, what we're voting on tonight. So I would like to have that opportunity to discuss that with them.
What I saw in that letter, Ms. Manning, was, I believe, referenced a, starting in the middle of August, and that is simply not what we're doing here.
Right, so, yes.
If we could go through the discussion phase first, and then if you want to make your motion then, because I feel for people...
Yeah, yeah, we're still motioning on the floor right now, is just to vote on having discussions, so we don't even have a motion yet.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Saltner. Do you know, of the 80% of these state divisions that start before Labor Day, do you know how many, how early the average?
I do not know that.
Extra instructional days, or... Okay, so you don't know how many are actually starting, like, two weeks, the full two weeks before?
I do not.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I like this second version. I'm a little disappointed that we only got this letter yesterday afternoon, because I too would hope that the Hotel and Motel Association would know that we're talking about four days. So I would feel more comfortable about postponing the second calendar, just so that we could have that clear conversation, because, you know, that is part of our revenue-sharing stream of funding, and it would be nice to get kind of their thumbs up, or, yeah, we understand, oh, it's only four days, it's not mid-August. So I would like to try to reach out to that association as well, if we could do that.
Mrs. Williams, I will tell you that we did reach out to the Hotel Motel Association, and that was done by Ms. Allen, and she got no reply. What we later found was that the individual who was president or the organization to whom she had reached out and who had spoken to this group prior was no longer in office, and that is the individual to whom we reached out.
Yeah, I'm not faulting you, but I just think that I would feel more comfortable if we could just vote on the first year, and then make sure that we have clear communication.
Yeah, absolutely. So I talked to Teri at the Hotel Association last week after the board meeting, followed up with her, who's the new executive director there, and that is why the letter was sent yesterday.
Okay.
Yes.
Mrs. Franklin.
Actually, I'm not sure that I have... Just out of curiosity, I guess, just from, it sounds like we have discussed this as a board in the past and tried to do the pre-Labor Day. And just, I'm just putting it out there as a matter of opinion, but do we feel like that association will ever be on board with the pre-Labor Day start? That's why I'm just curious, just based on past historical conversations. Yeah.
But it's important to note that they were on board when we were looking at starting a little early this year to help with learning recovery. They were on board for that. So, you know, fingers crossed that perhaps now that they realize it's just four days prior, you know, unlike Florida, which is a huge destination, starts about, you know, somewhere between the 10th and 15th of August every year, so...
So does Myrtle Beach.
Right. So I think it's worth a reach out, just to make sure that they know that we're not a mid-August start date.
Just to remind you, when they adopted the statutes, and Mrs. Williams will remember, it was a long time ago, we had a very ugly round at the General Assembly, trying to get this through, did not pass. When they changed the statute, it limits the amount of days you can open ahead of time, but it also recognizes you have to be off for the Labor Day weekend. So that was a concession the General Assembly gave them because of concern when the... So that was a concession the General Assembly gave them because of concern when the trade associations came, which you would lose the business that weekend. So you've got that built in time around the holidays to allow the individuals there. One of the things they were pointing out, that a lot of individuals that go to the beach are not from, don't, don't stay at the weekend. They're local at this point, but this would allow them to come in there. So that was considered by the General Assembly. And that's why the limitation in the amount of days you can open up and when you have to offer the holidays was in, in response to what the trade associations were asking the General Assembly to consider.
And I'd like to share, for me, I was, and Myrtle Beach is like my family's second home. So we've been involved with that area. And when I spoke with them, I learned, wonderful gentleman. They start the third Monday of the month, which can be as early as August fifteenth. You know, and, and it comes up every few years, but they forever have been going back to school, you know, by mid-August. And I only recently learned about Williamsburg, and it's another kind of, it's, we don't usually compare ourselves with Williamsburg, but it is a tourist town with, with attractions, with restaurants, with motels. And, and they've gone pre-Labor Day. So, and, and as Mrs. Lanetti pointed out, the four-day weekend, I think, makes a big difference too to the industry. And that is a General Assembly requirement. So I'm comfortable with, with, with moving ahead with, with both these calendars tonight.
Mrs. Riggs.
Mrs. Allen. You said that you did reach out and speak to the associate, to Terry?
Yes, I did.
Last week and today?
I got the letter from them yesterday.
Oh, yesterday. Now, when you reached out to her last week, did you tell her it was four days?
I didn't specifically say four days. I sent her the link to the board meeting. She asked for the information about what was shared at the board meeting and sent her the link and the timestamp of when you all talked about the calendar, and also gave her the FAQs that were included in the survey.
But did she see the actual calendars?
It would have been in the presentation.
In that presentation. Okay, so she had the opportunity to see that?
Yes.
That it was four days?
Yes.
Okay, and they still sent the letter?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to answer that question, Ms. Franklin, that you had. Would it ever change? No. I remember being at the General Assembly when Mrs. Weems spoke to them. Each year, you know, before the law changed, it was, it was constant, you know, and I understand. But now it's different. Most of, you're eighty, eighty?
More than eighty.
More than eighty, start before, and the four, four days, and then we've got that long weekend. I just, I, I don't think we should. They got the information, they had it, they still wrote the letter. I don't think it's going to change their feelings, so. Anyway, I'd like to go ahead and move on with this vote today, too.
Did you say the letter referenced mid-August?
I believe so. I have a copy here.
Yeah. Mrs. Hughes and Mrs. Anderson.
So I really don't believe there's ever going to be any opportunity to change the minds of the Hotel and Restaurant Association. Because they're running businesses, and their priority is running a business. And it is an income stream for us, but our priority is the students. And I, I'm really a big fan of starting early. And I could be happy moving forward tonight, because I really don't think anybody on either side is going to budge. But I will also say, if there's, if there's enough support for it, and, you know, people want to vote on it at the next meeting, I don't think it's going to make a huge difference whether we vote on it tonight or in two weeks. I, I would be okay with that, but I really don't believe it's going to change anything.
In response to the inquiry about the letter, the letter reads, "Most of these businesses would not be able to hire teachers and students who could not commit past mid-August."
And I see what they're saying. For teachers, if they're hiring teachers, they're going back a week earlier. So they are technically mid-August. So I do, I, I, I do understand what they're saying.
Ms. Owens.
Yes, and, yeah, I don't, I don't know that we're going to see movement on that, whether we wait to vote. I do agree with Ms. Hughes, that I think that our, our goal is to look at what's going to be best for our students and our families, our, our staff members. And I do think that this is best for, for them. I understand that the hotel industry has their own issues with running a business. And they would like our students and staff to be available for all of the days of the entire summer. Understand that. I don't know that I fully, I don't want to say believe, but believe that we are in a position in our economy to say that you are not going to hire our students, you're not going to hire our teachers, because our students aren't going to be able to work for those four days. That you have enough staff that you're just not going to hire any of these high school eligible bodies that we have. I know it's not going to be as convenient for them, and some things might have to get worked around. And I know it can be an issue for the teachers who may work summer jobs as well. But we're talking about four days for these students. We're talking about another five days for the other staff members and still having the availability to work that Labor Day weekend. And so I, I'm fine with us moving forward with what we feel is going to be best for students and staff. I'm not opposed to, to waiting if somebody feels like that's going to make a difference, but I'm fine with us moving forward.
Mrs. Anderson.
So when you think about the fact that eighty percent of the other school systems in our state also start before Labor Day. And on top of that, our neighboring states, West Virginia, North Carolina, Tennessee, Maryland, most of their school divisions start pre-Labor Day also. So when you're talking about we should hold off because, you know, they need our, our students and our teachers to help with their staffing, I, I look at it as, well, you know, starting about mid, mid-August, the majority of vacationers kind of wean off anyway. So, and then we also need to think about our reason for being here is to do what's best for students. And, and so I look at it as what is best for students and staff. And so this particular pre-Labor Day start, to me, looks like it is absolutely what's best for students and staff. So I don't see any reason to hold off. I don't think we're going to be able to change the minds of our Restaurant and Hotel Association members. They're pretty set in this, and they've made it clear in their letter what they prefer. And I understand why they feel the way they do. But at the same time, our goal as school board members is to do what's best for students and staff. So I'm in favor of voting for both of these tonight and moving forward.
Are, are you intending to be in the queue again, Mrs. Franklin? Go ahead.
I, and just so I can decide how I want to vote on this, I just, you know, is it going to make a difference? I, I think that we firmly have support for the pre-Labor Day in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So is it going to make a difference if we provide a respectful, hey, we're just giving you a heads up, this is a four, I mean, how is that going to change the relationship with that? Do you feel like that's really going to hurt or benefit us by giving them a respectful, oh, by the way, this is how we, you know, it's four days and this is how we plan on moving forward? Is that, does that make a difference to, to our relationship with the industry? I'm, I'm asking. I don't, I'm sincerely...
I think depending on how you look at it, that was already done.
Yeah.
The outreach has been done, so.
Well, we're ready to entertain a motion now, I believe. Yes. Miss, Mrs. Riggs?
Well, you have to vote on the motion that's already on the floor.
The one on the floor, does that include the new version of?
The motion on the floor is to open up the floor for discussion, yet we never voted on it. So there's a motion and a second, but there was never a vote. So all we're voting on right now is to approve discussion.
Well, we, we... No, there's nothing to vote on. That's why I said we need a new motion. Wait.
Mrs. Manning's correct. You didn't vote on it. Now, you could do a subsidiary motion to it, but you, you put the, the motion that should have been on the floor was what's on your cover sheet.
That's what I was trying to do.
On your cover sheet is what the motion you should have made. However, you did get a new, new calendar in the middle of this, so that may be something. So at this point, you're just going to vote on your motion to discuss. And then if you want to make another motion, I guess, or you can make, somebody can make a subsidiary motion right now on that. And then I don't know if you want to do both calendars, or if you want to split the two calendars up, since there was some concern about that, and take one calendar first and then the next one.
Mrs. Manning.
So I'll make a substitute motion that we approve twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, option four, version two calendar. And that we defer the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four proposed calendar until our next regularly scheduled board meeting at, on March the eighth.
A second, Mrs. Weems. All right. Everybody understand what we're voting on right now? Yes to the first, second defer. All in favor, show a raised hand.
Okay, we have six ayes.
All opposed, show a raised hand.
And we have five nays, so the motion did pass to approve version, option four, version two of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three calendar, and to defer the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar until the March eighth meeting.
Yes. So, Mrs. Manning, do you intend to reach out that way? You could let the board know?
Yes, I've already reached out and...
Okay, we'll wait for your response, and you can email the board?
I mean, everybody can reach out if you want, but, yeah, I'm going to be reaching.
That's not the vote. But if you do speak, would you mind copying the board?
No problem at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we're back to our...
It's for the committee reports. I was just raising my hand.
No, we're, we're first, we're going back to workshop for our final workshop item.
No, it's, we're going to committee reports, and it was moved to eighteen.
You are, yes, yeah. Yep, okay, committee reports, correct. Who would like to start? Mrs. Hughes.
I am a member of the Optimist Club. This is something that lessened Carolyn Cox and my parents did when I was younger. And we have revived it and had a couple of partnerships going with the school system. I would like to give a big thank you to Dr. Robertson, John Sutton, and Matthew Delaney. We pulled off a, an essay contest that a student will get a scholarship for. It's gone to the state organization. We also took two students from each high school to Crossover Day last week. In addition to the three I already mentioned that helped organize that, we also had Delegate Tim Anderson and Senator Bill D. Staff and their staffs. They organized tours for the children. They got announced from the gallery floor. And then we will also be having an upcoming oratorical contest where our students, both middle and high school levels, can compete for scholarship contests. So we will have more, more for Dr. Robertson, Mr. Delaney. And Dr. Smith will be in on this one, too, since we'll have middle school students. And I would just like to thank them for jumping right on board and helping to coordinate that.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Weems?
Yes, I attended the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting last week at Kemp Spill Rec Center. And they had a question about what happens when members have to leave early because they move, or, you know. And so we, I talked to John Sutton about that, and we got back with them and cleared up the, the process to do that. Also, the SEAC, of course, we know it's a great group of parents and community partners and resources. They are working for children with special needs. And they kind of have three or four main items on their agenda this year to try to accomplish. And one of those is parent outreach and empowerment. And they just made a great flyer all about, are you feeling lost? And ways that you can connect to SEAC, and then exactly kind of telling what SEAC is and what it does. And also, they're doing quarterly webinars with OPEC and FACE. And they're also going to be doing some teacher and staff trainings, like little short, like two-minute videos that they'll be having for teachers and staff in the summer about special, special education services. So that was SEAC. And then I also met with our working work group for the Mental Health Task Force. And I've been assigned to the work group about stigma. And so we discussed what is stigma and the causes of mental health stigma, the causes of stigma in the workforce and at school, and what can we do to eliminate such assumptions. So it was a great discussion. And then our committee, our work group, will come back with the entire mental health workforce and, and move forward from there. Which the, the next meeting for the Mental Health Task Force is...
March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, March twenty-ninth. So, so as you may recall, the Mental Health Task Force has divided into about six subgroups. Ms. Owens is on one, and I was on the stigma. Also, my last meeting was SHAB, the School Health Advisory Board. And again, that's made up of, of course, our, our head nurse, Heidi. And it's also made up of community resources and organizations. But what they've been, what we've been working on is a policy to bring forth about outside food and how to handle that after COVID, when you bring it into the schools, like for classroom celebrations. And so we are working on a policy which will get to Kami, and then Kami will give it to Trenacek to go through our policy committee review. And then it will bring, be brought forward to the whole board in, in probably a couple of months, or maybe at the end of April or May. Some of the community announcements at SHAB, where the benefits office is hosting hybrid events for employees, and they sound great. Their webinars, some of the titles were our wellness during stressful times, weight management, humor for stressful management, financial management, and there's a karaoke event. So that all sounds good, and it's going to be for our employees. Also, the nurses attended a conference at CHKD regular recently on seizure awareness training that was mandated through the Department of Education. Also mandated through the Department of Education was asthma management planning, and we do have that in all of our schools now with the rescue inhaler training. And so one of those, and all that training is at every school now. So even though we've been, you know, running differently, all these committees have not, you know, paused at all. And they've been working hard and continuing to do things that are mandated from the state, even in the midst of this pandemic. So I really appreciate all their, their work with the School Health Advisory Board. Thank you so much.
Okay, Vicki.
Thank you. I was asked by Governor Yonkin and Secretary Gadera to serve on a working group committee on the topic of laboratory innovation schools. There's some legislation out there that, it keeps changing some. The, the latest iteration is that it would be a partnership between school districts and colleges. And this working group is, you know, just throwing out ideas. It's, it's college presidents from across the state, including locally here in Norfolk State, Old Dominion University, our community college systems. And it's, it's a really interesting group, throwing out the ideas of, of what we can do in innovation as partnerships with these universities. So I don't know what the final outcome is going to be, because we're waiting to see what the legislation is going to look like. But if you have any questions about that, or want any more information, feel free to reach out. But if you have any questions about that or want any more information, feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you. Mrs. Riggs?
Okay, I just wanted to say, uh, for sure, the, um, Sister Cities, uh, Youth Ambassador Gala is a for, uh, a go. It will be on the twenty-second of April at the Zider. Um, I will have tickets for sale for $25 apiece. Uh, we will also have an ad for the Virginia Beach School System in our, um, our, uh, agenda booklet. There's also a, um, an art contest that we are extending our, for our first time this year that goes along with this gala and it's for, uh, grades eight through twelve, which will have, um, um, money, uh, sc- not scholarships, but there's the prizes or money for first, second, and third places for both groups, the eight through, um, nine and ten through twelve. The Youth Ambassador, we have extended the applications to the schools and that's eight through eleven. It was, uh, the final was on the twenty-fourth, but we're extending it through the twenty-eighth. And so we hope to get, uh, more applications for this, um, scholarship, um, opportunity because that's what, uh, students get. It's like a $2,500 scholarship for first place and $2,000 for second and $1,500 for third. So I'm hoping people are hearing this and, uh, there'll be more of the wonderful talent that we have in our students because it's a, it's a talent contest to become the youth ambassador for our city. So I'm looking forward to seeing this. It's usually really, really good. So if you know of anybody that has a great talent of any, any kind of talent to show or share, which we do, we just have not really received many applications. I would love to get more, much more than we have, so, but we are having it.
Thank, thank you. Mrs. Fulton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to report that I attended the, uh, General Advisor Council for the Technical and Career Education on Tuesday, February the sixteenth. It was a wonderful meeting and talking about the different things that the students are doing. They talked pretty much about the dual, new dual enrollment pathway updates concerning all the students that's entering to our schools and TCC. But the biggest highlight that they spoke about was the Skills USA Demo Event. And Mr. Brandon Martin gave us that detail. They will be having a great, um, career day, uh, at the Virginia Beach, uh, center, convention center in April. And I would hope that some of us turn out and go there. I will get that precise date to you. He was still working on the date. But it will be, um, demonstrating and highlighting our students and all the activities that they do, especially electronics and technology. And it's always a great program. So I would get that date to you, uh, in April to attend that. Do support our students. They're doing really well with the Technical and Career Education Center. And we're doing, um, great things. Uh, they also talked about the Dennis Assistant Tech Booths at Adoptions and a couple of other things that were going on. But most of all, do be mindful and I will get that date to you concerning the, um, Skill USA Demo Event in April. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Melnick?
Uh, just a reminder that the Audit Committee meeting is March first at one o'clock here in school board chambers. And, um, school board members, um, and the general public, we have a gala for Green Run Collegiate. I was not able to attend their governing meeting because it was, it was rescheduled for today and I was here. And so, um, any information out of that I will share with you next time. But the Gala for Green Run Collegiate is April second. I have specially priced tickets for school board members and a QR code to give you all. And would love if you, um, were able to attend. Um, and I will pass that along to you all via text.
And speaking of tickets, I, I did hear back from a, a few of, of you, uh, but just to, uh, for the public's benefit too, the Pearls of Wisdom, uh, Oyster Roast and Barbecue Fest, that's, that our education foundation sponsors, it's a major fundraiser. And the public can, can look up their website for information. And meantime, I'll get these tickets to those members who reached out to me. Okay. Yes, one more?
I'm sorry. I just wanted to announce the next Special Education Advisory Meeting. So you can get it on your calendar, um, for those watching. It will be the fourteenth of March. And so that's an evening meeting. So they have, most of them are in the morning, but we do try to have a couple at night. So it will be March fourteenth at six-thirty in the evening. And it will be at the Parks and Rec, um, office here on Landstown Road. Thank you.
All right. I think we're ready to proceed with our final workshop item. Which I have to go back and, I guess, inclement weather learning plans.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello again, Dr. Rogers.
Hello. Good evening, Chairwoman Ryan, Vice Chair Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Spence. This evening I will provide you with information regarding the VPZPS teaching and learning plans that we have for students and staff during inclement weather and some changes that we have made. As you may know, school divisions are provided the opportunity via House Bill seventeen ninety and Senate Bill eleven thirty-two to implement up to ten unscheduled remote, remote learning days due to inclement weather as well as other emergencies. In August of this past year, teachers were asked to prepare instruction for two days of enrichment that included project-based virtual learning opportunities that could be made available to students very quickly as a result of inclement weather. Our teachers were also asked to consider the impact that those weather events have on power as well as internet connection when preparing instructional opportunities for students. In the event of possible extended school closures, our staff were also asked to consider the way in which they partner with our families, on how they communicate with them and the way in which schedules are shared with families, as well as how students would access instruction during those school closures. In order to assist our schools with the home-to-school connection for weather-related closures, the Department of Teaching and Learning did provide teachers with suggestions as well as resources for the home-to-school connection. The graphic on that slide is kind of small, but it does provide you with a snippet of what's provided to teachers via the website, our website. So since the August memo, our staff has been reminded to have two days of asynchronous instruction available for our students. And also teachers have been reminded to have students take home their Chromebooks as well as their chargers. And teachers have reviewed with students how to access Google Docs offline without internet to provide students the opportunity to participate in learning when there is no elec- excuse me, internet connectivity. So since the last weather-related school closure, we have decided to make some adjustments to our plans. So starting February twenty-third tomorrow and moving forward, our students and families will know that the first inclement weather day where students are out of school will be asynchronous for our students. The first day will be asynchronous in order to allow our students and staff time to ensure that students as well as our families have all of the information as well as the, as well as the materials that are necessary for potential subsequent inclement weather learning. The first day, excuse me, when there is a threat of inclement weather, our teachers will prepare by ensuring the necessary information is present in electronic green folders that are located in our learning management system, Schoology. That information includes things like schedules, links to classrooms via Zoom, as well as the teacher office hours. That information is communicated. Our families will be reminded where to access the information as well as the learning resources, as well as to have their Chromebooks charged and ready for learning at home. So what might it look like? On day one, the asynchronous learning happens. And during that first inclement weather day, the opportunities will be published and provided by teachers as well as a link for their office hours. Teachers will be available throughout the contractual day. If there is a consecutive inclement weather day closure, our teachers will remind students and parents of the expectation for synchronous learning as well as how to access as well as to submit their work. They'll also prepare for synchronous instruction. Students will have five days after they return to school to submit work in order to be counted as present. So on the second day, if there are consecutive days of virtual instruction, and that's necessary as a result of inclement weather, the instruction will be provided to students synchronously. Normally that's through Zoom. This means that teachers will provide direct instruction through a live virtual platform like Zoom. And our secondary teachers will provide thirty to sixty minutes of direct instruction per class. And our elementary teachers will provide fifteen to thirty minutes per subject area. Additionally, a brief meeting, excuse me, a brief morning meeting as well as small group check-ins will be provided to our elementary learners. Activities will be posted for students who are not able to link into synchronous instruction. Our students with disabilities, our English language learners, and students who receive PALS support will receive links as well as times to receive services synchronously. And as was shared earlier, our teachers will share reminders with our families that include information such as cameras must be on in order to ensure student attendance. Our students will be expected to follow schedules, participate in synchronous instruction, as well as submit work within five days in order to be counted present. And with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mrs. Manning and Mrs. Hughes?
Yeah, so I think this might be a Ms. Lynetti question. And I'm, I'm trying to look at the law right now because of, of the new code twenty-two-point-one dash two-point-one that requires, um, the in-person learning. But I know that there's an exclusion. Um, and I know that there's twenty-two-point-one dash nine-eight. Does it allow unlimited virtual learning days for inclement weather?
I'm not sure this section actually applies to the inclement weather section. I think I'd have to pull up the.
Yeah, that's what twenty-two-point.
The guidance that we've gotten is that ten days of virtual instruction allowable for either inclement weather purposes or this year for COVID-related purposes.
Ten days, okay. That's in, where, where, okay, yeah, that's in the twenty-two-point-one dash nine-eight. Okay. Thank you.
And Mrs. Hughes?
So this is a question I had before and Dr. Spence said we'd be having, um, this workshop that we could talk about it then, which is fine. I don't take any issue with calling snow days. I was a working parent long enough that I'd rather hear it six PM the night before than six AM that morning. But, um, if we're, if we know ahead of time that there's some sort of warning and we're talking about, you know, reminding families to make sure their Chromebooks are home and charged, you know, maybe on a Friday because we know something might be coming Sunday or Monday, how difficult is it in that time to at least have some of what we're doing synchronous? I mean, I realize if something unexpected happens overnight, there's not a lot of time to prepare. But these times we've had, we've known ahead of time that there was probably going to be, um, some virtual time because of weather that we knew was coming. I guess I would just like to see a little bit more real-time instruction if we can make that work.
Right, which is why we're suggesting that we would be able to shift to that after the first day. I think the issue is sort of for a teacher, so if you think about the example you just gave, on a Friday, tell them be ready for Monday. You're asking, that, that, in that example, you'd be asking them to work over the weekend to convert their planned lesson for that Monday, which would be a face-to-face lesson, to a virtual lesson. And, and I don't think we want to do that. So let's say it was Monday to Thursday that we were projecting out that perhaps we'd have some snow. We're still asking them then to do an additional conversion. So it takes, I mean, I, I know you understand. When you're teaching face-to-face, the plan is very different than when you're teaching in, in virtual environment, right? So you, you have to look at, maybe I was planning on using manipulatives in the classroom. How, what am I going to do to shift over virtually? Maybe I was looking at how I was going to have groups doing project work with, with each other or some think pair share with each other. And I've got to figure out how to set up all the breakup rooms, or breakout rooms rather than breakup rooms. The breakout rooms. I don't know. Maybe there were some of those. I don't know.
Probably at the high school level.
Yeah. You know, the point is it's not an instant conversion, right? It takes a little bit of time. And what I, what I want us to avoid is having teachers double up on work and then find out all of a sudden, well, we didn't go. Um, and so I'd rather we just give ourselves that one day of lead time to give them the opportunity to make those plans ready. You know, so that they could move over to, rather than just do kind of generic synchronous instruction, that they'd be ready to move over to keep going where they were.
Well, yeah, and if I can add, um, you know, additionally, uh, we want the learning to be meaningful and it just gives a little additional time. Whereas with the asynchronous plans that we do ahead of time, they can, um, pull projects that kids can do just in case they don't have access to, um, electricity and/or internet the first day. And when we find the second day that they do, then we can, you know, have a well-planned, well-thought-out lesson where our teachers are able in many instances, uh, plan collaboratively with, uh, their colleagues so that they can really provide some meaningful instruction as we did, uh, during the other times. The other thing is we do have some parents who are also teachers and that gives them some time to make sure that they have their children at home, um, set up and squared away as well. So we do have the capability, but we think that, you know, given a little bit of time that we can really plan, plan out, uh, a synchronous learning opportunity that's meaningful for those students the second day moving forward.
Okay, that makes sense. And I'm sure that I don't know everything that goes into launching an, a virtual lesson. I just wanted to make sure the kids were getting as much face time as they could.
Sure.
Thank you.
Certainly.
So, um, last year, um, when we had some students who were virtual and some students who were in school, I actually went to a teacher's house who was teaching, um, virtually. And she was doing synchro- synchronous lessons. She was doing a fifth grade class. I, I spent the morning with her. And I left there so amazed. So my colleagues, I would advise any of you, if you ever have an opportunity to go to a teacher's house when they are doing a synchronous lesson, if you ever have that opportunity to go do that, you will be totally, totally, it will blow your mind as to how they do that. This teacher blew my mind completely. I left there thinking, oh my goodness, this teacher probably earned $500,000 that day. She was amazing. If you haven't seen it done, I know parents have watched, you know, from their perspective, what their, what their student is getting. But, but it's different when you are watching the teacher put on this lesson synchronously. And, and then she went into, you know, breakout sessions with students and she was able to monitor all this. She had three monitors in her house at the time. I, I was, it was, I was totally amazed at what she was able to do that day. Of course, she, you know, like I said, she, she had actually gone out and bought a, an extra monitor herself just so she would be prepared. Because she was doing this virtually for the whole year for this fifth grade class. But I'll tell you what, if you ever have an opportunity to do it, it is worth watching. It is absolutely mind-boggling.
Thank you.
So this session really was developed in response to school board member questions. So our collective thanks to the staff for the thought and time that went into this.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.